God damn it.
Get on me?
No. You is it? Okay. What? I don't know. No, you're not, man. All right, well, this is gonna happen when it is time. We've been all over the beat, but much in green. Okay, and uh unmute, alright? Alright, sorry for the delay. Uh, I would blame it on technical difficulties.
Uh, the reality is, it's probably more like mental difficulties, but we're live, so... If you're all ready, uh, we can bring this to order, as close as we get. My call is meeting to order. Uh, roll call, uh, uh, looks like all commissioners are present. Uh, I see Cheryl and Joe and Jeff and Steve, so, uh, unless you demand a formal roll, uh, we'll, uh, deem that as efficient. Pledge of allegiance, pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Alright, now we know Jeff Mergan has a belly bu- belly button. It's about the height of your camera, Jeff. Uh, anyway, uh, okay, uh, approve the agenda. Uh, I do have, uh, one change, um, under, uh, I wanna change the title on J1 and substitute for the word salaries, uh, substitute the word compensation. Uh, in my opinion, uh, dwelling on the word salaries, we're acting like employees. The reality is that we are essentially a board of directors. We'd be more accurately considered, uh, management, and, uh, we do get other things besides salaries. So, in the interest of, uh, uh, complete, uh, information, it makes sense to do that. Uh, is, uh, unless there's any objection to that, we'll move forward and see if there's any members of the public that, uh, came to talk to us, uh, today in this section of the agenda, as we get deeper into the agenda and maybe under, uh, uh, Shelley's area. Uh, I don't know that anybody has, uh, contacted us to be on the public access form. Is that accurate?
That's accurate, but you had nobody contact us to be on the agenda.
Alrighty, and before we get, uh, any deeper into the batting order here, uh, boy, talk about things happening on the fly, I'll bring you up what I know right now. Uh, Dr. Willie sent out an email this morning at about 6:30, and, uh, and it's, uh, added information that, uh, impact, uh, on the levy by department, so it's a breakout of those impact, uh, uh, more detailed, specific detail. We knew, uh, with the, with the agenda items that have been submitted to us, what the total budget was for each, uh, um, department, but that's a breakout of what the, uh, the specific levy impact is. And then, announced, uh, only hours ago, the legislature is, has passed a small business assistance package, and, uh, don't know the details on it, but it sounds like, uh, it's, uh, more aimed at bar restaurants, uh, uh, and other businesses, don't know specifically what the criteria is, uh, uh, just had maybe, uh, thirty second conversation, uh, with Dr. Willie on this, and it sounds like it's more of a universal to checks that are on bus- on those types of businesses that are on record, uh, if you wanna amplify that a little bit, uh, uh, go ahead.
I sure, I sure can't, uh, so far, what we know is the department revenue is gonna issue payments pretty quickly to restaurants, breweries, wineries, distilleries, bowling alleys, bars, fitness centers, um, all those that they have, uh, whatever their code is for them, and they're gonna issue, um, an immediate check to them. Then, um, a, a, another, I don't know the total amount, I think it's just over a hundred million dollars, uh, is gonna be distributed to the counties to do a business and nonprofit relief program, and, um, it appears that, uh, Stearns County will receive about three point seven, three point eight million dollars, um, and for, for, to do a business relief program, and we have, we will want to get this out as quickly as possible, but we have apparently until March to be able to, um, do that. So, um, I'm assuming we'll do a program somewhat similar to what we already did, but we'll have to dig through the legislation, make sure, uh, we fashion something, a program that makes sense, and, um, totally assuming that we'll bring that to you at your next board meeting for you to consider, so we can get that program going as quickly as possible. As you know, we put out about, almost five million dollars in, in leave to small businesses and nonprofits in the, in the care that are funding rounds, so this is a good amount of money, I think we can, uh, do a lot of good with, uh, with this, this dollar. So, more to come at your next meeting, hopefully we'll have that program ready for you to enact it, so we can get right at it.
Thank you, uh...
It's good news.
That, that concludes the breaking news portion of the agenda. It's all fresh stuff, and, uh, I think we're in a spot where, you know, uh, unless it's just something, uh, on the order of the surface of the world opened up and swallowed California type of magnitude, uh, I, I don't think we need, uh, a meeting between now and year end to approve anything, I think we're in a good spot in that respect, so, uh, anyway, uh, one crisis at a time. Uh, let's move on to consent agenda, does anybody want to pull a specific item at all from the consent agenda while I blow my nose?
I'll, I'll move it, this thing with the, with the, just the comment on that emergency operation plan, is there a copy of that that was supposed to be included, or is that just a comment?
Uh, I think there was, um, a commissioner, there was supposed to be an attachment there, um, and if, if it didn't get to you in time, I, I think we were notified of that at some point, I don't know if it was this morning or yesterday.
I did ask Erin about that, and I don't know if it's because of the length, but I guess it often isn't in the, um, packet, but they, she said that she would get us links because I do notice that was missing, or it wasn't there.
Yeah, even for the general public, to have a link would be nice.
Yeah, I'd like to pull them... I'd like to pull number seven for correction and some discussion.
Okay, uh, anybody else have any other item? Uh...
And then, all items except for seven.
Alrighty, thank you, uh, and so Jeff, you'd be taking up your questions on number seven, we get to that part of the agenda, is that your game plan?
Uh, we could do it right after, right after we...
Yeah, parks this.
Maybe it makes sense to do it under human services, since it's part of that, it's the vaccine-related one, right, the...
Parks report. No, it's the Parks Department.
Oh, the Parks one, never mind, we don't have a separate, that's fine.
Okay, Jeff, what's your game plan, what do you, what would you prefer?
I can, right after we get done with this consent agenda would be fine with me.
Okay, uh, if, uh, if our department head is, uh, online, uh, he might be waiting for that portion of the agenda, so we'll have two shots at it. Uh, otherwise, we got a motion and a second to improve the consent agenda, uh, all in favor say aye, District One?
Aye.
Two?
Aye.
District Three?
Aye.
District Four, aye, uh, Steve?
Aye.
Alright, okay, uh, if we've been joined by the, I, I don't see where, uh, uh, we've been joined by the Parks Director, so...
Mr. Chair, he's here, he, he, he's here.
Alright, uh, go ahead, uh, Jeff, what's your questions?
On, on page thirty, I believe it is, uh, the, uh, District Three, uh, our Commissioner is, uh, correction there, that should be Orville Willenbrandt? Where all the directors are listed, District Three Director should be Orville Willenbrandt.
On page thirty, Commissioner Mergan?
Uh, I believe it's page thirty.
Thirty of the, of the packet, yep.
Of the packet.
I will double check that to make sure, um, cause I'm, two thousand and nineteen, I wanna just double check to make sure it wasn't actually, I mean, Mergan wasn't still on the chair. Okay, for sure, and make that correction, Commissioner.
Okay, yeah, mm... Twenty-six, I have a question about the parking permits, says there are over twenty-five thousand parking permits. Okay, I don't know, maybe that's different than fees, says there were only thirteen hundred dollars taken in in fees? But, at least I didn't see it, the amount of money that should be taken in from parking permits?
Yeah, so the, how we break that out is the number of things permits that are, are sold are, to the daily, are the five dollars, and our parking fee is technically from our per se ticket, uh, that we have, it's a ten dollar parking fee slash ticket if you don't buy it in daily or an annual, but how we calculate that is that we take, out of that ten dollar fee, we take the five dollars, um, out, consider that as a daily, because they should have bought it daily anyways, so that thirteen hundred dollars is actually collected in excess of five dollar daily parking fees. So that number ends up being odd, because we don't always get the ten bucks, some people only throw six dollars in a, in a parking, uh, ticket envelope, some people, you know, go through all the ten dollars, so that's just how we break it out.
I'm having a real, having a real difficult time hearing Ben. If anybody else is, I'm having a real difficult ti- time hearing Ben.
Is everybody, is this better?
That's better, yes.
Yeah, harder, faster, Ben.
Alright, so essentially, actually, um, those two numbers, the twenty-five thousand is the, the amount of dollars that we take in from the actual daily parking passes, so they're five dollars apiece, luckily, we don't always get five bucks from everybody, cause there is a pay on your honor, uh, pay box out there, some people put three dollars, some people put two dollars. The extra parking fees that you see, um, that collect, so we have like a parking ticket, and it's, it's considered a parking, it's ten dollars, if you don't buy a pass or have a pass displayed on your, on your windshield and you wanna park in the, in the parking lot. We do subtract five dollars out of that ten dollar fee, to count it as a daily parking pass, because they should have had that daily parking pass anyway, so that really, on that thirteen hundred dollars ends up just being in, in kind of the excess that we get from writing what I would say as our parking tickets.
Okay, so where it says daily parking permits, that should be twenty-five thousand dollars?
Oh, no, that's twenty-five thousand permits, sorry.
Okay, times five?
Times five, roughly, because we don't...
Okay, so that would be the amount of money taken in twenty-five thousand, times five?
Correct, correct, sorry, yes.
Okay, alright, that answers my questions there then.
Okay, any other, uh, questions on this specific item by any other board member? If not, uh, uh, I'll assume that...
If that, I'll, I'll move the, uh, to approve the Parks Department report.
Okay, thank you, is there a second?
Second, Steve.
Thank you, Steve, uh, uh, all in favor say aye, if no one, if there's not a no vote, I won't make you walk through the, uh, one, two, three, four stuff. No one objects?
Right.
Great, alright, Steve, just about the time we get this process figured out, it's the end of the, what the, okay, we recess the regular meeting and take up the Human Services Board Consent Items, uh, does anybody have any questions on any of the Human Services Consent Items?
Good morning, Mr. Chair.
Uh, I don't know who's talking, hi there, uh, um, Jeff, you had something under the Human Services?
I would like to pull number one, I, I do not intend to support that.
Okay, um, good morning, um, Mr. Chair, members of the Board, Melissa Huberty, I'm Human Services Administrator, so today I have, um, the consent items D1 through D9, and they start on page one eleven and go through one thirty-nine. Um, I do wanna highlight the first two items on the consent agenda, um, on May sixteenth, the first one is the tobacco ordinance, on May sixteenth, twenty twenty, Governor Walz signed a bill raising the state tobacco sales tax, um, or sales age to twenty-one. The new state law reinforces the federal tobacco twenty-one law, which was signed by President Trump in twenty nineteen, there is a copy of the updated ordinance in your packets, and with your approval today, this puts Stearns County in compliance with state and federal law. Um, and the second item, I don't, um, I'm available for questions for that, now we're at the end, uh, regarding T21, otherwise, I was gonna go on to the second item, which I wanted to highlight, um, is on D2 on page one twenty, and is the Community Corrections Act interim plan. Um, on December seventeenth, twenty nineteen, the Stearns County Board approved the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one Community Correction Act Comprehensive Plan, and this year is an off-year, which requires a short interim plan to allow Stearns County to receive our state funding. So the interim plan includes our current budget, staffing by program area, organizational charge, salary roster, and a narrative description of changes and updates. A few areas to highlight from our narrative description is that we continue to expand our work on integrating services between juveniles and adults, um, we've begun using more technology to more effectively and efficiently supervise individuals in the community, and we're conducting, um, client assessments and interview, or interviews virtually using technology, and as a result, have been much more efficient in maintaining safety in the community. And finally, as you know, we've presented previously to the Board, we have two dedicated agents focused on high need individuals with mental health individ- or, mental health issues entering the criminal justice system, and we've been working very collaboratively in this public-private partnership, um, and we've been serving, um, people who have been using a lot of services in the community with a lot of excellent outcomes. So the request today is that the Board approve our interim plan, I mean, the remainder of our items are D through, three through D9, found on pages one twenty-five through one thirty-nine, and I'm available for questions on any of it, thank you.
Okay, does anybody have, uh, any questions on, uh, any of the consent, uh, items?
So just, Mr. Chair, just to, um, I guess confirm, as opposed to clarify, the changes in number one are, so we're in compliance, if we don't make those changes, we'll be out of compliance, okay?
Correct.
Any other, okay?
Okay, no, Melissa, how was this changed from eighteen to twenty-one, was it just a decree by the Governor?
Uh, no, Mr. Um, or, Mr. Chair and Commissioner Mergan, this is both by President Trump signed into law twenty nineteen and Governor Walz in May, on May sixteenth, twenty twenty. So now, um, what happened in twenty twenty is Governor Walz went in compliance with the federal government, and now this is us in Stearns County getting in compliance with both state and federal law.
This went through the legislature in the state?
Correct, correct.
Wasn't just a Governor decree?
Although I think originally President Trump did it by executive order, and then we went from there, but the state did it through the legislature.
Correct.
Reminds me of a couple Thomas Jefferson quotes, um, first one, "The natural progress things is for liberty to yield and government to gain control," and then the second one is about, he predicts future happiness for Americans if they can prevent the government from wasting the labors of the people under the pretense of taking care of them. Anyway...
Okay, uh, so, um, the, the, I, I guess I'd be asking for a motion to, uh, approve the, uh, Human Services Consent Items, uh, I think I'd conclude with a, uh, comment for number one, or do you guys wanna do the balance of the consent items and come back to number one and approve that separately?
Sounds like what Jeff was asking.
Huh?
That sounds like what Jeff was asking.
Okay, I need a motion then, everything but number one.
I'll, I'll move all the items except for number one.
And a second?
I'll second.
Okay, uh, I'll assume then that unless there's an objection, uh, that's a unanimous, uh, yes? Great, nobody objected, you're not a shy group, so I assume that's, uh, how things go. Okay, shall we come back to number one? Uh, is it appropriate to have a separate vote on that, uh, if, uh, somebody would want to make a motion to discuss this further? Here's the, uh, here's, uh, the objection from Lee's perspective on this, here's how the enforcement actually works, and it has not changed since, uh, the initial, uh, tobacco action, uh, and legislation that started years and years ago, we're going, the, the enforcement actually works like this, the deputies send out an explorer deputy to walk in to podunk, uh, cut great gas and attempt to buy cigarettes. Now, there's probably, for the first time all damn afternoon, there's maybe two cars in line and the clerk behind the counter, often a retiree, and this is second income, and this ha- this happened more than once, back in the day, uh, hurries through it, and the next thing you know, she makes the sale, and in comes a deputy with citation, and, uh, frankly, folks, that's BS, so, uh, I realize that, well, you know, the President did this, and the Governor did that, and we can be chicken butts and go along with the game, and the way it works in practical purposes, it's gonna be maybe an underage person behind the counter trying to run the shop, or an older person, and that's where enforcement falls. Uh, so, all in favor, I mean, did we have a motion this second?
So I, I certainly understand and agree with you about that, I will say that, at least as it relates to alcohol, I mean, what it practically has been is they card everybody, and I find it fascinating when I get carded, so, uh, clearly, I'm not under twenty-one, haven't been for quite a long time, um, but the legislature did pass this, we do need to be in compliance, so I'm gonna move it with agreeing with your note, Lee.
And, and just because something's a good idea doesn't mean it should be a law.
Yeah, but this is also, I will say, there have been numerous studies that have shown if you have young people, and it was in our notes, not buying tobacco until they're at least about twenty-one, and that whole frontal cortex thing, they're much less likely to smoke, and I, we could have a much longer conversation, I personally still believe the drinking age should be lower than it is, among other things, but there is all of that, and it is the law, so, just saying.
If it was up to me, I'd make everything nineteen. There's also studies out there that show that people that get married at a young age, like eighteen, their divorce rate is higher, so should we have a law?
Right, I, I hear ya, I, I don't necessarily disagree with any of that, Jeff.
Do we, do, whoo, great, great. This has been the last meeting of the year, and I think it might be the most fun, uh...
Can I chime in quickly?
Steve, go ahead, I'll second, I'll have a second, this'll last a while.
Well, I'll, I'll second it, but I'll chime in on page one seventeen where it actually clarifies, you know, that a, a compliance check will involve a person between ages of eighteen to twenty, you know, which I've never seen that spelled out where they, they're telling you, we're gonna send somebody in that, that's eighteen to twenty years old, you know, to see if you'll sell them cigarettes, probably just like do with alcohol, so, that's all.
Okay, anybody else? I assume the horse is dead. Alright, uh, I think this will be a split vote, so, uh, all those in favor say aye, District One?
Aye.
District Two?
Aye.
District Three?
Aye.
District Four, nay. District Five?
Aye.
Alright, split vote. All right. Split vote.
Thank you.
To the record and if, you know.
Should we have a public hearing? Me and it's a split vote? Just kidding. Just kidding.
You're an evil man. You're an evil man. Okay. I think we can work on the, oh, gosh. I think we can reconvene the regular meeting. We've got the consent items done for the Human Services Board. You know, all the excitement. I lost track of where we were in the agenda. The next item would be a, a public hearing on the policy for drones. And the presenter, I guess, the presenters are Steve and John from the Sheriff's Department. And we have, you've got an attachment here. We have some discussion on that. You want to tell us about it? Somebody want to tell us about it?
So as I figure out how to unmute myself, Mr. Chair. Yes, this process is similar to what we went through with the body camera policy. So there was a, this summer, there was a change in state statute, one of those, or lots of state statutes. One of the statutes that was changed was, that applies to unmanned aerial flight systems or drones. So in order for us to proceed with our current program and buy another smaller drone that we had already had approved for this budget year, we need to accept public comment and hold a public hearing regarding our policy. So all that is required of the Board, since you are the governing body for our budget, is that you hold a public hearing, accept public comment. After that, there's no further action that is required. And I, at the end of your public hearing, I do have some comments that our office received, and I could read into record if you wanted me to. Some of them are a little lengthy.
Did any, we got some, uh, some written stuff on this, I think. But did anybody contact us that wanted to comment on this in the public hearing? Either Sheriff's Office or County Administrator? If nobody has, then, and if there's no other information on this, or if the Board doesn't have any questions, I'm going to say that we can conclude the public hearing. And then if the public hearing had be concluded, John, what are you looking for for actual action on this?
Actually, there, there is no action required again. It's just a policy of the Sheriff's Office. It doesn't require approval. All we needed to do was have the hearing to accept comment.
Thank you. We have a subspecialty called inaction that we're really pretty good at. So I'll, I'll assume that we have met the requirements for this to be in place. Thank you, John. And I don't know if that makes it better, makes it worse, but it digs the ball down the road here. Jody, what like works?
So, Mr. Chair, do we still have to, like, have the public hearing?
I thought we did. Nobody contacted us.
Well, they did, I think we still need to open and close it.
Okay. I open the public hearing? All right. No, second call. Public hearing, comment? Third call, public hearing, comment? No comment. Close the public hearing, and we don't need any action. So, uh, can we go?
Mr. Chair, I, I do have a question, though.
All right.
For John. John, does this get anywhere sticky as far as individual rights with warrants? So my right to privacy, how does that work for the use of the drone?
So the use of the drone by statute now has, has been curtailed. We can use it for traffic accidents. We can use it in an emergency situation. We can continue to use it, and these are all without warrant. We can continue to use it without a warrant to assist other county departments. So ditch flyovers, those kind of things of public areas. We could also use it for pre-planning for large events before people are there. So if we had a large outdoor concert, something on Pioneer Ground, it's the County Fair, we could fly over to MAP and look at things prior to the event. But once the event is ongoing, we would need a warrant. So except for those rare circumstances, almost everything now that we would need to do is covered by a warrant. So one of the things that, that we have done in the past and will continue to do is, call it overflight or safe flyover, or search warrants that we do that involve the SWAT team. So we would just need to amend the warrant at that time to include the use of the drone in the warrant. For other operations that we wanted to do something, we'll have to go to court, we'll get a warrant. And that is that oversight to safeguard your right to privacy, the public right to privacy, is having that judicial review.
But as far as immediate action, let's say chasing a suspect or a lost individual, do we, we have no delay in getting that warrant, do we?
We wouldn't need a warrant for a lost individual. A, an ongoing crime, depending on the particular vagaries of that crime, if we can articulate that there's a danger to public safety, we wouldn't need a warrant. If we weren't able to articulate a danger to public safety, then we would have to get a warrant. We'll probably have to work on generating a warrant template for those kind of situations to speed up the process. But even with that, obtaining a warrant could probably take an hour to an hour and a half.
Okay. Thank you.
So yes, it, it will, it, it might have the, the potential to create some impact as, as far as speed and response.
All right. Thanks a lot. Okay. Now I think we can, here, Jody?
Good morning, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. Today I just wanted to update you on the 2021 road program. Back in June, you, the Board approved the 2021 to 2025 road program. And at that point, we had already cut a significant amount of projects based on the projected state aid revenue decline. And we even cut from our county levy portion of our road program simply to help cover some of the maintenance revenues that we were going to be losing in state aid. So on packet page 151, you have a copy of the original road program, and I've highlighted the projects that have been delayed. For instance, we have a structure over County Road 9 that did not get in for plan approval in time to make it onto the waiting list. And as you're probably aware, the bridge bonding money allocated isn't covering even nearly all of the projects that are on the waiting list. We delayed County Road 69 because that's went from resurfacing to a partial reconstruct, and so that needs to be delayed a couple of years. But the big one, and I know Commissioner Notch has heard about this one, we're delaying, delaying County Road 12's reconstruction from New Munich South, about three miles, just under three miles. And that's a combination of other projects coming in with higher estimates than we anticipated. And the Mindup is also doing some reconstruction in Meyer Grove, so they're going to need County Road 12 as a detour. I know the road badly needs to be resurfaced or reconstructed, but we're going to band-aid it together for another year. This is more just to make you guys aware of what's going to be happening in the event you are hearing more complaints from people that roads are getting pushed back. The other thing is this is probably going to create a domino effect in future years, but you'll see that new program probably in May sometime. So if I'm, I'm here for any questions, if the Board has questions about our road program. But I did, if nothing else, want to update you, since you did approve the original program back in June.
Do we have any questions about the road program for Jody?
Jody, Mr. Chair. Jody, how are we doing on the quarter percent sales tax for roads?
Surprisingly, it's staying pretty steady. We had a couple of months that were below our 2019 calculations, but they were still above our 2018 calculations. Overall, I think we're going to be on track for what we budgeted throughout the five years, especially given that 2019 was significantly more than we had budgeted. So I think we're doing okay. Online sales are certainly helping, and I think a lot of people during quarantine did a lot of home projects, so I think that probably also boosted some sales.
Any other questions for Jody?
I was just wondering at what, what point is going to come out with the five-year update then on the road program?
Generally, we do that in about May or June. We want it pretty much set in stone by the time we submit our budget. And so I, I would expect probably May. Like I said, there'll be kind of a domino effect, especially if some of these estimates come in higher than anticipated. Our County Road 71 project, for instance, came in significantly more than we had budgeted for it too, but that traverses through the Richmond chain of lakes, the Horseshoe chain of lakes. So obviously, we have a lot of environmental considerations with that project, and it did come in with a high estimate.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Jody? Here's a comment that bridges Jeff's observation, but it also dovetails with Joe's observation from our last meeting. What do we do? Joe asked it in a variety of ways, but essentially the question was, what do we do if we have unanticipated shortfalls in revenues, whether they be from property tax revenues, state revenues, federal revenues? And the disadvantage of having served during the transition from Ventura Administration to the Plante Administration was Ventura knew that there were shortfalls in the state budget that would go to local governments. But by then, you know, gosh, he was in his fourth year, maybe the last couple of months, really didn't give a damn, wanted to move on to his next WWE appearance. And the punchline is, it all comes down to how much time we've got to react. In that first sixty days, and more like the first forty-five days of the Plante Administration, we found out that Jody's department, I think Jody might even been the department head by then, that, good thing you started when you were 12 years old. The, uh, the, the only thing we could cut on, on short notice was the highway construction program. So we didn't let the bids. And then, then the net effect of that in terms of our operation was that the five-year road plan became the six-year road plan, because nothing got done that year, or very little got done. What got done was if we had funds in hand already, we did those, but that was it. And the second thing we can do on short notice is hiring freeze, and that has impact on, uh, later in the year if you declare that immediately. So you do generate some reductions from taking an action like that. If it gets any longer term with, after the highway hiring freeze, we can look at ways to generate funds to create an early retirement incentive system for some of our senior employees. And then after that, it gets to be an adventure. But there are, there are, there, there have been some things we've done in the past that are tools that are available. We just got to keep our ear to the ground. Well, just like this morning, you know, it's 6:30. We got information, maybe even earlier than that, about the legislature taking action on Small Business Assistance Package. So it does happen from time to time. But typically, government is criticized for slow motion. But it does happen from time to time that we move fairly quickly. It depends upon the circumstances. So, sorry for the long answer, but there were, that was two concerns that different Board members had. And we're not, we're not helpless, you know? We'll have to use our handcuffs or something else. Okay. You know, all the excitement, I lost track. Jody? What else do you have for us?
That's all I had, unless anybody had any questions for me.
What do you got? Anybody?
All right. Thank you.
Yeah, Merry Christmas, Jody. Go later. Environmental Services. Kelly?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Charlie Benson, Environmental Services Director. We have three agenda items for you today. We will talk a little bit about the citizens' request on Agenda, the second Agenda item. But I have Heidi Wenskowski available for our first Agenda item, which is Strecker Edition. So Heidi, if you'd go through that with us?
Sure. Good morning, Commissioners. Heidi Wenskowski with Environmental Services. This item is to consider a two-lot plat titled Strecker Estates submitted by Foxhaven Farms in South Haven, Minnesota. The plat is located in Fairhaven Township, and the township has approved both the preliminary plat and the final plat. And the County Planning Commission held a public hearing on June 18th of 2020 and also approved the preliminary plat. So today we are requesting the Board approve the final plat of Strecker Estates.
Any questions, any Board members on this particular item?
Mr. Chair, you're muted.
Oh, thank you. That's right. Okay. Any questions on any particular, thank you. Yeah, you dream. Any particular questions on this particular plat item? If not, a motion to approve would be in order? I guess it's my district that can take that action?
Well, at least I'll move it, Mr. Chair.
Okay, I'll second it. Yeah, see? Good thing this wasn't a quick draw contest. I'd be dead. All those in favor say aye? And I'll assume if no one objects, it passes. How's that? If you object to the objection, I'll need to know. All right, that passes. All right.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Item G2 is packet page 161. That is my corner addition. Before we get to that specific Agenda item, I want to go through a little bit of information with you related to the, that was directly to you as Commissioners. The, there was a citizen request that you received requesting a mandatory EAW be completed. Staff had reviewed previously this request and did not determine that it was a mandatory category. The citizens, it is my understanding, did put a request in, in the form of a citizen petition to the Environmental Quality Board. And we have, the requests received by the Environmental Quality Board are to be reviewed within five days, and we have not heard anything, which means that the petition was not then forwarded to us as the regulatory governmental unit. So that's why I believe we received a direct request from the citizens. So if you as a Board would like to require a discretionary EAW, that is your decision. And a discretionary EAW would look at, does this project, which is the addition of 49 campsites and moving of 11 campsites, does that require, or does that project have potential for significant environmental effects? And, and that would be the discretion of you as the County Board if you'd like to require an environmental assessment worksheet, which is a an environmental assessment worksheet, which is in the EAW. So we did put a list of conditions, mitigation strategies together under issue identification. So that is attached in your packet. And item number twenty-one in your issue identification packet does talk about EAWs. So at this point, we have looked at and contacted a number of agencies that would be contacted if an EAW was done and have already requested participation by those entities, such as DNR, MINDOT, Watershed District, Soil and Water. And that's part of our normal review process. So if there was something that you felt we were not mitigating or managing through those conditions under the issue identification list, or if there was something above and beyond on that issue identification list, and you as a board wanted to require a discretionary EAW, you, you could do so. So if you feel that there is a potential for significant environmental effects, then you could order an environmental assessment worksheet for this project. So I think there's some discussion that you may want to have, or you may want to just move forward. That's up to you as a board.
I'd like to weigh in a few things here. I for one am not ready to vote on this at this point. And if I would be forced to today, I would have to vote against it. But we were supposed to meet with owner of Cozy Corners, plus the neighbor with significant land acreage that is next to it, and, and the things that have not been done and all the problems. And we were going to meet with them at the same time, so they, I would like to do that anyways, so that they both hear what each other says and it's not relayed.
Jeff, if you could start over, because you broke up in the middle. Jeff? Jeff? Jeff, you're breaking up. Jeff? Can you start over? We're losing, you're intermittent. I'm sorry.
I don't know how to correct it. I'll turn.
Mr. Chair?
Okay. Okay, so I'm, I'm not really ready to vote on this. And if I were to be forced to today, I would, I would have to vote against it. We were supposed to be setting up a meeting with the owner of Cozy Corners, along with the landowner that has significant acreage adjacent to it. And, and we're supposed to meet with them at the same time. And that has not been able to be put together at this point. Because I'd like to see where they both hear what each other has to say. And so it's not he said, she said, or relayed through a third party. And I believe our last time that we talked about this, we had set up January 5th as in time it would come to the next board meeting. So we got, and, and I know it's, what, that was forty-nine units? But there are sixty camping sites that are going to be there that were not there previously. So I mean, there's some validity in that. I, I think there's a lot of questions here.
Jeff, if you made a motion to table the item, I'd have to honor it.
Mr. Chair, can I just say?
Mr. Chair, you're not being asked to take actions, so.
Right.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, what, what I was talking about was specifically the environmental assessment worksheet request that the citizens put before you. The action on the item, we are as staff requesting to move forward. As Commissioner Mergan had mentioned, we are asking that to be tabled so that we can have those additional conversations. So that would be January 5th for the full item. So that, we are not asking for that. What, what we are putting before you is the request that came, which is for the request of the board for an environmental assessment worksheet, which is separate, a separate issue from the item that is on your, in your agenda. So because it did not come through the Environmental Quality Board, which is typically what happens with a citizen petition, for some reason, it was determined not complete, or some, some action at Environmental Quality Board did not, they didn't forward it to us. Therefore, the citizens are making a direct, pardon me, a direct request to you as the county board regarding an environmental assessment worksheet, if you as a board want to order an environmental assessment worksheet. So that is separate than the actual item. It's kind of a 1A, so to speak. It's, it's prior to action on the project itself.
Jeff, it's your district. What's your preferred action?
So, okay, if I'm understanding this correctly, the citizens did not send the request into the proper place?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Mergan, the citizens, it is my understanding, did send that to the Environmental Quality Board. It's my understanding, if it does not get forwarded to the governmental unit, which would be Stearns County, that there was an issue with the petition. It didn't have merit, or it didn't have, it didn't meet the completeness standard for some reason. So therefore, it did not get forwarded to the, to the regulatory governmental unit, which is Stearns County. So we have nothing from the Environmental Quality Board. And then if you as a board want to order a discretionary environmental assessment worksheet, you could do so, but it would be a good idea to have a reason for that ordering of a discretionary environmental assessment worksheet. So if you feel there is a significant environmental effect, if you can name that environmental effect and then order, that would be your choice. If you feel that all issues will be taken care of via the issue identification and process, we can, we, you don't have to order, well, you don't ever have to order a discretionary environmental assessment worksheet. But that is the, that's what's really in front of you. But people asked for the board to consider this item.
Another question.
We've got a couple of questions.
I think I'll let Jeff pursue this for a while since it's his district. But Joe, you're next in the batting order. You're in the on-deck circle.
Okay. I'm not the big hitter, though.
Yeah, you're, you know, depending on who you talk to, you're our weakest hitter.
Okay. It's my understanding that environmental assessment would have been done if this is fifty or more campsites added, right? Am I correct in that?
Mr. Chair, that is, Commissioner Mergan, that is correct. The, the threshold is fifty campsites, fifty new campsites, new campsites being added.
And there are sixty campsites being added that were not previously there?
There are forty-nine campsites plus eleven that are being moved. So eleven.
They're being moved to new campsites that were not previously in existence.
That would be, yep, that, there, it is a different location for those eleven sites, correct?
See, this is kind of a shuffling of statistics to me here, a little bit.
Mr. Chair, that's correct, and that's, there is interpretation that's involved. And if you as a board feel that you want to request an environmental assessment worksheet, you certainly can do so. I think that's why we're having this conversation.
Yep, and I'm kind of up in the air on that one way or the other. I think there are a lot more significant issues here between the, the Cozy Corners owner and several of the neighbors that, that I'm more concerned with. Because I've had numerous neighbor, or several neighbors, several meaning three or more, tell me that he has not been a good neighbor. And, or in those, in those words, similar to those. And I think there are some things that I would like to see being taken care of that the Cozy Corners owner would agree in writing to take care of before I would, you know, vote to approve this. Although I'm not against the Environmental Quality Board, if, if it, the assessment, if that, if that is what it takes to make some other things happen, I would vote for that.
Mr. Chair?
Jeff, can I let Joe in on this now?
Go ahead.
Joe?
Okay, I'll try not to strike out here, Coach. My, my question is, as far as the rationale, the reasons to have this environmental assessment worksheet, how long will it, would it actually take? I mean, if, as far as procedurally, I mean, sometimes government and the agencies move slower than a glacier. And, you know, we could be here, you know, next Christmas waiting to get a decision. How, how quickly do they act on these worksheets?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Persky, that is very dependent on the process that it takes. So if there are significant environmental effects that need to be reviewed, we would take whatever time it, it needs to go through those issues. What would be important to us is to identify what the issue is. If the issue is cumulative effect, that is the question, then it's more of a scoping question. Is that just about the campground, or is it all the traffic and all the lakes and on the whole water body? That's different, and that would take obviously a lot of study and a lot of other information would need to be gathered. If it's about stormwater, then it's onsite and it's something we can address because we already have stormwater within our ordinance, and we manage that onsite. So it depends on what the issue is and how long it would take to go through that process. This project, just so you're aware, this project, or this has gone through two EAWs previously. There has never been anything ordered passed in environmental assessment worksheet. We've looked at those past two environmental assessment worksheets and tried to make sure we accounted for all of that information within our issue identification process. If there is, Commissioner, going forward, has specific items that we should be identifying? I know the fence is one of them. We are, between now and January 5th would be a great time to figure those items out. So if there are additional issues that we are unaware of, for Commissioner Mergan, we would really like to have those so that we can, we can start to address those issues. Does it rise to the level of an environmental assessment worksheet? I don't know, unless you would potentially order one. And it can take a significant amount of time, as well as then staff time and the dollars associated with that process.
Then the second part of my question is, can we go ahead and ourselves, take a look at those issues and see if we can adequately meet mitigation, even maybe stricter than what the state could require, and move, move it faster and more appropriately?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Persky, the state would never take action. The environmental assessment worksheet is exactly what you just said. Whatever the issue is, that's what an environmental assessment worksheet does, is it identifies issues. We, as the governing body, then put conditions on or mitigate for those issues. So if there are issues, if we could identify those issues, you don't need an EAW because all you do is identify the issues, address the appropriate mitigation, and then manage that issue. And if Commissioner Mergan has a few specific items, we would love to have those. I did make a direct request to the citizens group to identify issues for us to take up. Because really, that's what an environmental assessment worksheet would do as well. We're just kind of trying to, you know, look at, is this, is there something else that could be identified through an EAW? And we just haven't figured out what that would be at this point.
Um, I think I did, I mentioned all of the concerns that I had, either to you verbally or else Angie, and I don't remember which one on the phone we talked. I think I did mention about four different items. I have a list.
Commissioner Mergan, those issues, we did bring those specifically into the issue identification list. Sewage treatment issue, the fence issue, the trespass issue was brought forward. And, and I believe we have addressed all of those issues. Both Angie and I talked about the conversations we've had and brought all of those into the issue identification list. So they should all be in that issue identification list.
Also, we did talk about which, which, which trailers were to be moved along Edgerton Road, part of those eleven. Let's see.
Mr. Chair?
The future expansion. All of those items, I would, I would need to see in writing before I would support.
All right, well, Jelly and Terrell both want, seem to want to comment. So Terrell, you get, you can be the next hitter.
You know, I'm left-handed and I can follow it off a lot.
All right, all right.
I eventually could get it. That's why we keep going with the best analogy. A question I have had is, you know, the question raised about our 24 to 28 plan update. Because several questions have been raised about state law, what ordinances we do or don't have, among other things. And we're in the middle of this, so it's hard to even raise some of those questions. But it seems like there may be questions for future expansion. I don't know, I mean, it's hard because we don't have certain ordinances to apply to this. But, you know, I know that under what you sent back to us, and that was a lot of work. So thank you, staff, for the work on the responses. The planning commission determined it was okay under the plan. But many, many people who've, you know, kind of sent us a signal saying, how on earth does this fit under the plan? And then we've got the gaps on ordinances. So I'm wondering, especially for perhaps anything future down the line, should our ordinance review committee be looking at this? But should the board be at least having a conversation about how it fits? Jeff, I just want to say, I'm really glad, thank you for the work you're doing, because I am in the same place as you are right now. I'd have to vote no. And then I guess lastly, I'm wondering whether or not any of those, the conversations are being had is perhaps a different number. For me, also, it doesn't pass the smell test on, looks like, you know, trying to say it's one thing when it's really another in terms of the forty-nine versus fifty. But I guess if you were going to do, and Shelly, we've talked about this, so I'm guessing the answer might be no. Or at least we don't have a lot of measures we could do right now under our current ordinances or the state statutes. But maybe one possibility to be looking at is a smaller number of, of additional sites. And I guess partially what I'm thinking is, under our plan, we wouldn't, you know, be letting this amount of density with, you know, regular lot sales. We just wouldn't do it. But this is a different animal, so I have to admit for myself, I've really been kind of wrestling with where does this fall in? And how do we deal with some of this moving forward, if you could take Cozy Corners out of it?
Okay.
Mr. Chair, is the action to continue this till January 5th? Is that, that's the real action here?
I don't know, but I had promised Jelly in a follow-up input to Terrell. So then I guess you're next in the batting order. The inning continues.
Mr. Chair?
Jelly, you're going to have.
The, the item currently that I'm asking you to look at is, do you want to, based on the citizens' request, consider a discretionary EAW? If you do not want to do that, and you can take it up at a later time, which is also a possibility as well. And it could be, this, that item could be moved forward to January 5th as well. If you feel that things were not answered between now and January 5th, essentially kick that can down the road as well. We were specifically asking for the next portion of this to be brought forward, to be forward, to continue to January 5th. Was originally my, my first request is to discuss the environmental assessment worksheet. And if you as a board want to have a discretionary one, identify issues you felt were, be addressed. We could do that under a discretionary EAW. If you feel you don't need one, you could say, we don't need one, there's no other action you'd need, and we could just do a continuation to the future meeting on January 5th. And hopefully you all heard that because you just blanked out on my screen.
Yeah, I, so I have to admit, I'm not sure any of that. But I have been struggling with, based on our conversations about what, if we move forward, which I have to admit, I'd be inclined to say yes, what would come back differently? So maybe my not-so-well-stated question or whatever is, is there a way to look at this under the lens of our 2040 plan? Does that make any difference or not?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Clark, I believe the lens doesn't necessarily change significantly in our 2040 plan because I think it depends on how you want to look at the items. I think you can make decisions either way. And I think our planning commission did look at it through the 2040 plan. At this point, though, it's more of a, if you think we're missing issues and have not appropriately identified issues, we'd like to figure out what those issues are. And what I heard from you, Commissioner Clark, is you're concerned about the density. And we do have George Meyer on the line, just to know if there are questions.
Right, and I guess part of what I was wondering is, should we be looking at, if we could put this, I don't know that we could put this particular proposal aside, so I just want to say that out loud. But should some of the questions that have been raised through this process be looked at in terms of possible ordinances stemming from the 2040 plan? I mean, it almost seems like there's been issues raised that do relate to it. And the planning commission may or may not have everything in front of, they may not have seen some other remedies or other mitigating factors. So that's partially what I'm wondering.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Shelley.
I think there are some RV questions that are being asked. We did not ask them related to campgrounds. I believe Angie's probably listening on this portion of the conversation. So I'm hoping we can maybe add that to our list of parking lot issues for the 2040 plan. And if we have some additional conversation about campgrounds, then maybe that's the time to do it prior to ordinance amendments. So I think we can do that.
I was thinking, but that's where the density and park could come up, but also the questions raised about enjoyment and impact of the water. And right now, we don't have much about that at all. At some point, for the rest of the property owners, and I get it, so you don't have to restate what doesn't exist. But at what point, what any impact can we have on how crazy noisy it gets or the impact on water quality or fish or anything else? And certainly, the petitioners, I think, are hoping that something would come out in that worksheet. But I, if I understand the conversations of what you've submitted publicly, is that process is unlikely to change anything that relates to our decision based on current ordinances or statute. Is that correct?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Clark, that would be correct. I really tried to look at what significant environmental effects, plus looking at the past two EAWs that were done to try to identify a particular issue that hasn't been discussed. And Commissioner Mergan's items really are campground-specific and related to things that we do have some control over and can be managed through the process. So to me, it's not EAW-related, it's campground-specific related. Moving of campsites, which ones are they? The campsites along Edgerton Road, the septic in the fish cleaning house, those, all of those issues are campground-specific, which could be addressed in that item. So, correct, Commissioner Clark? I cannot find a specific EAW-type environmental issue. If you have one, I would really like to know what it is so that I could make sure we address it within the process that we're doing.
Okay, folks, here's reality, all right? The discussion has taken on what I think could be appropriately termed a chicken house quality. And with everybody chiming in altogether. But the chicken house quality does have the benefit of letting us know we probably aren't going to make a decision on this today. That said, you've all expressed, eh, to various degrees, valid concerns. And we need to, you know, put all of those concerns in one place to go forward. But you would need answers to all of those to make a decision, whether it's on January 5th. The only open question then would be, January 5th, what year? So the punchline is, relative to additional information. Shelley, you've been at this a while. You got a sense of what the board members are talking about or additional information? And if you do, then we can, you know, either table this or delay action into the next year. Go ahead, Shelley.
Mr. Chair, I believe I do. And I can verify that information with Angie. We've discussed a few items. We will have that information, and the intention is to have that all for January 5th, 2021. And we will then address those issues with you. And if you feel at that time you can make a decision, you can do so. And then on January 5th, you could also decide if you felt something additional needed to be done. So at any point, you can ask for a discretionary EAW. It's not a requirement as of today. So what we will do is, what I'm hearing, is move this forward and request a continuance of this item. Mr. Meyer was on the line, so hopefully, he heard what I heard. And consideration of density should be brought forward and discussed. And we will hopefully move that and have maybe a potentially modified application to review on the 5th as well.
Shelley, I'd like clarification on another issue that quite a number of people have brought up. And that's, some of these RVs have played extensive decks on them. And question is, were permits granted for each one of these decks?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Mergan, we absolutely looked into that issue. We had our sanitarians who licensed that go through that process. And we know that they looked at each of the permits that were issued. And I think I'm going to look to Jennifer if Sarah can complete that review. Jennifer, you want to go through that quick?
Sure, yes, good morning. Sarah is the inspector for Cozy Corners, and she is in process of doing that review. There's been a couple hundred permits issued out there, and she is going site by site to determine if every site has an appropriate permit.
Thank you.
Maybe we'll have that for the...
All righty, then the appropriate action would be to table the item?
Mr. Chair, that is correct. No, not table, just continue to January...
Oh, go ahead, continue it, okay, we'll continue it. All right. The only things that I would add to this is that, is to point out that sometimes inaction is action. Environmental, some of the environmental regulations from public, regarding public petitions are written so that the regulatory body has X amount of time to act on it. And if they don't act on it, then the issue can move on. So sometimes, inaction is actually a step forward. Because then, you know, it's okay, we didn't get feedback from your public body, so then we move on to the next item. And second of all, when you consider that, okay, government moves slowly, but to also say, "Well, we need additional local regulations." Well, you know, that's sort of like, gosh, I'm thirsty, where's the fire hose? You know, you're making it worse. So it sounds to me like this action or this consideration will go into our next meeting, and we can continue this. How about that? Can we live with that for now?
Mr. Chair, I just got a comment to request. I don't want to delay the time in the dentist's chair either. And so what I'm suggesting is that if we're not going to move forward with an EAW, then, and Commissioner Mergan, that those citizens that have those concerns should bring those concerns forward, either to the environmental or to you, so that we have those to be addressed or mitigated. And also take a look at the previous EAWs and see that this new proposal meets all those standards. And therefore, it would not be necessarily necessary to have an EAW completed. Because otherwise, we're just delaying it.
I assure you, the citizens have been bringing their concerns to me.
Okay.[1271.91][1271.91][laughter] I'm glad to hear it, Jeff. Because I'm getting some...
Yeah, it isn't just our, it isn't just our processes that resemble the chicken coop, okay? Public input is like that too. Okay.
If I can say one more thing, hopefully, they can have this meeting with all these people before, not just kick that can down the road. Because they want to meet, but they don't want to meet.
Oh, yeah. Depending upon, you know, if they change brands of aspirin, they change their minds. So it looks like we're going to be continuing this. If you can live with that, well, even if you can't live with that, it looks like we won't get this baby figured out today. So this action would be continued. Procedurally, does that take a motion?
Yes, please.
All right. Motion to continue, Jeff. Thank you.
I'll move to continue.
Great, second?
A second, okay.
I'll assume all are all in favor unless someone's opposed? Thank you. Now, I think it may be appropriate at this juncture because I've been, I was lobbied several times before the meeting to, rather than move on to item number three, that we take a mercy break here? Because the capacities of the various individuals associated with this process, boy, is that the way, vary from individual to individual. So we're going to recess five, six minutes or so, and then we'll take up aquatic invasive species. Thank you, this meeting's recessed. Okay, gang, if you're all available, we can resume this exciting exercise. I'm going to call this back in order and for some reason my audio seems to be shot. I'm not sure I can hear you. I don't know if you're hearing me. Probably seeing my face move, but...
We're hearing, Mr. Chair, we're hearing you. Can you hear us?
All right. Well, you have my sympathies. Let's call a meeting then back to order. All right, somebody was going to say something. Shelley, it looked like it was you.
Yes, so we are on item G3, that's packet page 180, and that's the aquatic invasive species plan revision. And we have Becky Schlurf and Cole Lowen as staff here to go through plan revisions with you so I address the issues.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Becky Schlurf, the Egg and Water Resources Division Supervisor. And today, this item before you is for the revision, approval of the revision to the aquatic invasive species plan. This was by resolution program that the county board took on in 2014 and the plan was initially approved in 2015. So I'm going to have Cole take it from here and go through the revisions.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Can everyone hear me okay?
Unfortunately, yes.
Well done. Let us continue. I would like to give you just a real quick overview of the program and then I'm just going to summarize the revisions. I'm not going to go through them line by line. You have a copy of the red lines in your agenda packet. The county aquatic invasive species program is overseen by Environmental Services Department. That was via Board Resolution 14-52. The program is funded by AIS prevention aid from the state of Minnesota. Should that aid be discontinued, the plan will no longer be in effect and the program will wind down operations. This aid was first authorized by the state in 2014 and Stearns County receives approximately $250,000 a year. In response to the legislation that authorized the aid, Stearns County formed an AIS task force in late 2014 to draft a plan as required by statute. The original plan was adopted by the county board in February 2015. The plan seeks to prevent the spread of aquatic invasive species in Stearns County by evaluating the risk of spread and proposing strategies to reduce this risk. The plan focuses on leveraging new and existing partnerships with others working on AIS prevention in the county. These partners include lake associations, lake improvement districts, watershed districts, and potentially others. The vast majority of the aid is expended annually via a request for proposal process. A ranking process outlined in the plan is used and in 2020, approximately 80% of the available aid was awarded to these partnering entities. And then Environmental Services annually creates a report on AIS program activities, which is posted to the county website and is sent to the Department of Natural Resources in fulfillment of statutory requirements. The 2020 report is currently being drafted. Onto the revisions. The proposed revisions capture a number of changes recommended by the AIS committee before the start of the 2021 program year. First, the committee is recommending that the percent funding allocation ranges within the plan be adjusted for each of the key work areas. These changes are being recommended in order to make the spread more uniform across the work areas as well as provide additional flexibility in program funding decision. This change will result in the spread being 10% over the main areas of work. Second, the AIS committee is recommending changing the ranking criteria itself for proposals received from partners for AIS prevention activities. These changes will streamline the process and the ranking criteria is contained in Appendix G of the plan. Third, the AIS committee is recommending the establishment of a contingency reserve fund to have funds readily available to combat any new AIS or aquatic invasive species new infestation. Research and experience shows a quick response to an infestation can result in successful containment, thereby reducing future ecological and socioeconomic costs from said infestation and the reserve would be capped at $20,000. The committee also recommends language to further clarify when contingency funds could be used for opportunities that don't fit under the normal request for proposal process and are not a response to a new infestation incident. Funding for those opportunities would be capped at $5,000. Fourth, the AIS committee is recommending changes to the plan to clarify roles and responsibilities for both environmental services and the various committees and panels that exist under the plan. These changes reflect how the program operates as well as the language contained in the Board Resolution authorizing the program. These changes would also include a list of potential stakeholders that could serve on the AIS committee as well as guidelines for effective committee function. Fifth, the AIS committee recommends various forms and changes both for form and for grammar to improve the plan's readability as well as to update some information that is outdated. And then finally, in 2021, the AIS committee is planning to conduct a more rigorous review of the plan focusing on its current goals and strategies in order to measure progress and recommend revisions to further AIS prevention in the county. As noted on the header page of this agenda item, it is our recommendation that the board approve the revisions to the plan and I'm happy to answer any questions the board may have.
Okay, what we're hearing about then is a game plan and we would approve that. My question to you would be, okay, in your earlier, in your remarks, you made the point that there are other bodies, other legal entities that this would apply to. Does that mean that the committees or whatever that are all the shots for those various entities, do they have to approve the same plan or is this, is our approval the end of the line and then we can maybe start doing stuff?
Sure. So the plan itself is strictly in relation to the funding the county receives from the state. And it is basically guidelines for how the funding will be spent on AIS prevention activities. And as noted, we work with our existing partnerships in the county, so the lake associations, the lake improvement district, the watershed districts, to actually implement the activities that the plan calls for. And that has been the case since the plan came online in 2015 and the first aid allocation came online. So for a number of years, the county has been working closely with our partners to implement activities such as watercraft inspection, treatment of existing aquatic invasive species infestations in order to minimize the risk of those being spread to other water bodies in the county, those type of things. And that would continue under this revised plan.
Mr. Chair, just to clarify, others do not have to adopt this plan.
There you go. All right. Thank you. Yeah, sometimes they are our partners and sometimes you wonder, hmm. But anyway, okay. So at this juncture, unless other board members have questions on this, the appropriate action is?
So, Mr. Chair, I'll go ahead and move adoption of the changes. I serve on the award panel and I got to say, we just got an incredible task force that keeps working on this and really appreciate their citizen work.
Okay. Are the citizens, okay, you got it, you made a motion. I'll ask that for a second. Somebody want a second? Terrell's motion?
I'll second.
Thank you, Joe. Terrell, who are the, not by individual names, but are the panel members associated or represented or affiliated with those various partners? How does that work?
So the committee and staff may want to say more and really appreciate your work, Cole. As far as the people who are serving on our task force or committee, they are representatives of the different lakes and lake associations and talk back and forth. As far as when we get to the actual awards panel, that is not, they do all the work. I've been sitting in all day listening. They really are looking at practical solutions, looking at what the different lake associations are doing and then how to leverage these resources as best as possible. And we, we're not fully unique, but we're pretty unique that this is really the amount of activity that's involved with them. And then as far as the actual panel, which approves the awards part, which is only a small part of this whole plan, it has been somebody from Soil and Water. It's been Greg Berg, Cole and myself. So it's a small group, but we all participate or listening. I'm learning a lot. But I got to say, I hope the state and somebody else figures out how to get more resources to us because there is more that could be done if there were some additional resources. But I think you'd be impressed, Mr. Chair, by who's involved and staff keeps looking for additional people to be engaged where there might be a lake that we don't have somebody who's actively involved.
Here's where my thought process is. At the beginning of the presentation, I'm saying, this is top-down. This will never fly. Then we talked about a committee, this is bottoms-up. I like that better. And then, as the explanation continued, it evolved back into more top-down. So I don't know what the hell you guys are up to.
What actually is, I'd say it's really very good in terms of bottom-up and working with partners. The one small piece is when we are actually approving what the group is recommending in terms of how the funds are done, then there is some other involvement. But it actually is really pretty good in that way and I like that. I think that's really good.
Yeah, I like that too. Sometimes, well, more often than we care to admit, we create crisis by assuming that everyone's on the same wavelength and it hardly ever works that way. But if that's the case, you need approval of the plan, right?
Right. And, Mr. Chair, I guess one last thing I would say about that specific point is, this is a pretty decent example of, you know, what it would take 10 years to get the legislature to ever get to a point on. Like, this is practical stuff. There are nuts and bolts there. I suppose I should be using water-related things, but they are just about figuring things out and getting people engaged and working with limited resources. So that's, it's actually a pretty good model.
The optimism of a newbie. Okay, so...
Ha, cynical optimist.
Cynical optimist. Gosh, that's a term I'll steal. The action then would be to approve this? Is that what you're suggesting? Somebody?
Yes, we have a motion and a second, Mr. Chair.
All right. You ready to vote, gang? If so, I'm going to assume that there's unanimous approval. If not, somebody so speak and then we'll go through the roll. Okay, this is approved. Thank you, folks.
Thank you.
Randy, you want to tell us about the last election?
Yes, we'll go through that. There's a PowerPoint that will be loaded here. With me today is Dave Walsh, the Division Director of Elections and Service Centers, and Roxanne Jarrett, the Election Supervisor. And we're going to be covering the administration of the election for the most part today. If you want to go to the next slide, Roxanne. These are some of the basic statistics. We're comparing to 2016 because that was the last presidential election. So the voter turnout for this presidential election was 83%, which is very high. In 2016, we were at 81 and I think the state was about 78, 79%. So we had a very high turnout in Stearns County. The turnout in the mail ballots was 92%. So that was a higher turnout yet. And we went from 22 precincts to 31 mail ballots. The number of absentees is 34,700 and mail ballots is over 10,000. Combined total around 45,000 and that makes 53% people voted by mail or absentee ballot. So that is more than those voting at the polling places on Election Day and that's the first time we've had that and probably the first time anybody across the state has had that.
The question I got for you, Randy, can you explain for gratification of the public the difference between absentee and mail ballot?
Well, mail ballots are typically the smaller townships and cities where we send them a ballot automatically. Where absentees, you have to request. You're in a mail ballot precinct, such as the Ashley Township, we're going to automatically send you a ballot.
Okay, so the mail ballots, the ballots were actually mailed to people whereas absentee is driven by request?
Correct, yep.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, on that note, Dave and Randy, what has been the response from those townships that we use only mail-in ballot? Have we gotten feedback from those townships?
Well, I'll say this, having 92% turnout is a pretty positive. Now, the first time you do mail balloting, although there's a lot of advertisements and notices that go out, there are still people that don't get the notice or don't understand what's going on. So the first time or two, you will hear some, you know, some feedback concerning that. But once they've had it for a couple of cycles or more, generally it's a very positive and people like it a lot. That being said, we're not forcing anybody to do a mail ballot precinct. We offered it, I believe, Dave, about six years ago and, you know, the numbers are continuing to grow. And I think with the pandemic going on, it was, you know, a safe way of voting and that's why we've seen more precincts do that this year. And that's why we've seen more precincts do that this year. On the last point on this one is there was 54 ballots that were postmarked by Election Day and received within seven days after the election. There was always that concern, was that going to be a big number? And it turned out to not be a very big number. Now I'm going to turn it over to Roxanne and she's going to talk about some of the security measures that are done.
Oh, that'd be a big deal. Yep. Go ahead, Roxanne. I haven't seen you for a while.
Good morning, Commissioners. Advance the screen here. All right. So I'm going to talk a little bit about equipment security and, and what we do here at the county for as far as testing. The county does test, do a pre-test and what we call a public accuracy test. We do the testing on the programming as well as all the equipment. So we do our GSA 50 and our DS 450, which is our central count. In addition to that, we do, do the testing on all of the mail ballot precincts and then the direct voting for the service center and the administration. And then we also do it for the Melrose direct voting. Not the direct voting for Melrose, they do handle all the ballots for the county. So we did, we do do the testing for, for those programming and, and equipment as well. In addition to that, the municipalities, they will test, do a pre-test and a public accuracy test on their ballot counters as well as their, their programming for Election Day. And what a public accuracy test is, is, is basically we have a, what we call a test deck and we run through ballots and then we check those ballots against the tapes from the ballot counters. And that, that's all done prior to the election. Post-election, we do what we call a post-election review. And what that is, is at the, at the canvassing board, the canvassing board picks three precincts at random. And from there, we, we take those ballots from those precincts and we count, hand count the three federal races. And then from that, we, and that is open to the public as well. And we did that on November 17th of this year. And those results must be within one half of 1%. So that's kind of a quick overview of, of the testing and on the equipment and the programming. Once, once we do do that testing pre-election, those programmings, they are sealed in, in each of the ballot counters. So once the testing's done, it's sealed and that seal isn't, isn't broken until after, after the election or until, till the day that, that we use it. The next thing I want to talk about is curbside voting. We did see an increase in curbside voting this year. A lot of it was due to either someone that was exposed to COVID or someone who was, was actually, actually had COVID. And so in, in, in the past, curbside was basically used for someone, as an example, that could not come into the polling place due to maybe having surgery or, you know, and they weren't able to walk into, to the polling place, something of that nature. But we saw more of it this year because of COVID. And, and it really, it, it is a time commitment, curbside voting. Because what it takes is it does take two people from different major political parties that you need to assist, assist the voters. So it, it is multiple trips. So once you get to the county here, we had, they called us, two of us went out. We dressed up in the PPE. And so we, we went out, we first had them, they had to complete the application and then you have to come back in and, and get the ballot. So it did, it is, it is a huge time commitment. We did see a lot of that. I think Dave and I did all the majority of curbside voting that Friday and that Monday before the election. That took up most of our days or a big portion of our day, those, those two days. So, um, so yeah, that, we, we did see an increase in that. I mean, you know, not sure what'll happen going forward, but that was a big, big part of the 2020 elections. I knew again this year, we had, we implemented online training. And what we did, we were using a software called Modus. We, we trained over 1,700 election judges. Now, some of those election judges took multiple trainings. They may have taken the, you know, election judges training and the equipment training and the poll book. And then we also had, knew we had a online training for pub, how to do a public accuracy test. And so we actually hired a temporary employee that did YouTube videos. She's actually daughter of one of our employees. And so we created these YouTube videos. And so we were able to have all of our judges do their training online. In addition to that, we had webex trainings with our clerks, our head judges and healthcare outreach facility employees. I knew this year for the healthcare outreach, we trained the employees of the facility. So they, so they were not, so the judges did not have to go inside the, the healthcare facility to, to the outreach. Another thing new in 2020 was our move to the service center. We moved in late 2019. Thank goodness we had all this space, even, you know, with all the social distance, social distancing we did. We did find that, you know, it did get pretty tight at times. There's a couple pictures I think you can see up on your screen in the lower left-hand corner. That was a photograph of when we did our public accuracy test. So as you can see, there's, there's multiple machines that we tested. And I guess I want to add too, as far as testing, we, we did the, we test the Election Day programming as well as our backup home drive for that. So the rest of the pictures are some of our storage rooms and one in the upper right-hand corner, I believe, is our workroom. That's how it shows on your screen, hopefully, so. Okay, I think this is, okay, so absentee and direct ballot locations. So again, we had plenty of new things in 2020. We did have, we added some direct voting locations. So absentee voting started 46 days prior to the election. So we had Stearns County, the Administration Center and the Service Center. I'll start the absentee voting 46 days to the, before the election. The Administration Center did hold, have ballots for Benton and Sherwin County for those residents that were in the city of St. Paul. Seven days prior to the election is what we call the, what is called the direct voting. And we had a number of cities, 10, 11 cities that did direct voting. A lot of those cities that would, they just handled their own ballots with the exception of the city of Melrose. They did handle ballots for all, for all of Stearns County.
Roxanne, do you have a preferred option? Those two options you cited, do you have enough experience with both ways of doing that to make a comment?
Both ways as far as the direct voting or, or absentee or?
Yeah.
The, the, you know, I, the direct voting, I, I like that. And I think voters like that because they can, they actually can put their ballots into the ballot counter during the direct voting period. So I, I do think voters, voters like that. I, we have heard that comment. So I think, you know, as far as even voters, I think that is something that they, they like to see, so.
The ancillary, the ancillary commentary is a valuable input going forward. So don't discount it. That, you know, input like that gives us an idea, even though the board isn't directly involved like the department is. That's helpful. Gives us some ideas what we can do going forward.
Sure.
All right, Roxanne, go ahead.
So last, I think for me, my last slide here is a graph of the direct voting locations and the volume that they handled. Now, the direct voting, we started that at the beginning of 2020, starting with the presidential nomination primary back in March. And we, and we started it then just to, to get the cities trained and, and familiar with using the Secretary of State's voter registration system. And so, you know, there, the, you can see on the graph, there's, there's very little active with the presidential nomination primary. And then again, they did it for the August primary and then for the, for the general. So as you can see, the city of Sartell, that was a very popular in the city of Sartell. Melrose was, was pretty high as well. So this just gives a, a quick outline as, as far as the volume of the direct voting for each of the different municipality locations, so. And with that, I will turn it over to Dave.
Can you guys hear me okay?
I can hear you, Dave, but you could do better.
Okay, I'll use my outside voice.
There you go.
One other thing we started this year in addition to all the ones that Roxanne mentioned was using drop-off, ballot drop-off locations. For some strange reason, people became distrustful of the postal service about halfway through the election process. And we're looking for, they were willing to receive ballots in the mail but unwilling to return them by mail. So we established a number of locations for them, for their convenience to drop off. Just for example, the, the service center, we did 985 were dropped off inside. And I think all total, there were almost 7,000 ballots dropped off by hand during the election. So I suppose that's about 8% of the total ballots were dropped off hand to hand at one of these locations. We decided early on not to use unattended drop boxes. Those became objects of some controversy later on. So that was a, a, a good move on our part. So they were all walk-in, handoff. We established a chain of custody for all of the ballots early on. So that was, that was a good move. Okay, Roxanne. The next slide just shows we established a drive-through, which I think was probably unheard of and something we hadn't anticipated, but we were nimble and, and we got that going. There were 4,000 of the 7,000 were handed off in that drive-through. So it became very popular. We had a lot of staff out there. It was fortunate that we were at the West Service Center. It was, it was easier to administer. The weather wasn't always super cooperative, but I, I wonder whether or not there's a paradigm shift here and people will expect to use something like that going forward.
Mr. Chair, that would be my question. With the drop-off, did we intend to use that because of COVID or are we going to intend to use that in the future?
That was just a question, yeah.
It's a, it's a good question.
Yeah, well, you know, is it? Maybe the right answer in both cases is stay tuned. I mean, you know, we're a public body and we respond to public actions. And if it was this widely used, and if you just think of the direction our society is going, I mean, ever more convenience and combined with the, uh, the distrust of the process and the general public, this is going to grow.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Persky, if you had asked me two years ago whether or not we would be using the drive-through lane for ballots, I would have said, there's no way. So for me to predict two years from now where we're going to be is, is, is a little difficult. We'll, we'll know more when we get there. But it seems, as the chairman said, people are expecting these things now. Okay, Randy had already talked about the popularity of mail ballot precincts. And I just want to reiterate that, how many of them did that? And then the exceptional turnout that we had from those precincts. We always get people who complain about the process, but a lot of them availed themselves of that process. Two municipalities have given us notice that they intend to return to in-person polling place by 2022. The paradox, of course, is then their, their turnout will go down. Yep, Roxanne, I'm going to go off script here for a second.
Okay.
I think this is an important thing for me to mention because there, there was a lot, a lot of, been a lot of skeptics and so on about our processes that we use and people thinking we're not counting their ballots and demanding proof that we have and so on and so forth. And the parties have the ability to attend and observe as we go through these processes. And one of the people who came, there were a number of people who did attend by their parties to observe. And I want to read a brief portion of a letter I received back. This is from an attorney who was sent here from St. Paul by the Republican Party of Minnesota. And I spent some time with her. We gave her a complete access to our operations and answered any questions that she had. And of course, she came here looking for her problems. So I want to read just a, of course, just two paragraphs of a letter. It says, "I wanted to thank you for the outstanding tour of the absentee ballot process in Stearns County. It is evident that extensive security provisions are in place and I am confident that the citizens of Stearns are well-served and can depend on an obvious tabulation of votes from the county. It was quite an education learning about the counting process and meeting the people involved. I very much appreciated your patience and time in answering my questions and discussing the many aspects of ballot counting and preservation. I learned so much and wish more people were aware of how this complex and very important process works." So this is from one of the attorneys from one of the parties. So I'm reaching around and giving myself a pat on the back right now because this, this is pretty, pretty high praise and it validates from someone who was sent here to look for problems, the quality of production that we have here.
I get it. I guess my editorial comment, my editorial comment. Dave and I have had numerous conversations about process throughout the years. And I guess my editorial comment is, and this would be the same comment for either party, is that it's remarkable that they send somebody out to either Stearns County or one of the, let's call them MICA counties to observe the process because they obviously know that there's no abuse and no problems with the metro-based system.
Congratulations on that. I'm wondering, Dave, if you'd mind sending board members a copy of that? Would you mind?
Yeah, email them.
When people ask questions and I'm not surprised, but given, you know, some of the challenges out there, that's, it's a great thing that she took the time to send that and it reinforces Dave's incredible work.
Yeah, thank you.
Yep, you know, the TV vegetables would assume the election process is just cut and dry. The reality is it's, uh, the election process is a dynamic, evolving organism, if you want to say it that way. And it's going to continue to change. The idea, you, you've correctly identified that the process in '22 is not going to be the same process as it was this year. And so on down the line, there'll be new aspects and new wrinkles on this evermore. So I'm sure that some of the fine minds and then also some of the dubious minds are working on ideas going forward. Thank you, Dave. What else you got for us?
Well, none of this takes place in a vacuum. Well, none of this takes place in a vacuum. Staff hours. So the temporary staff cost was over a hundred and eighty thousand dollars this year to make this. Make this work. When we shift ballots from polling places to the county through the use of absentees and mail ballots. We have to process and count those and mail them out. And that takes a lot of labor. And in order to get that done, I know there was some questions about not getting done on election day. Our throughput is about four thousand ballots a day. And if more than that come in, we can't get them done. And we just can't find anymore staff to help. And of course, we were allowed by law this year to take an additional day to do so. But we needed all that staff to to get done. And I I don't know what it's going to be two years from now. I I'm guessing it will be less, but. There's going to be redistricting, a controversial governor's race. And because of redistricting, there may be some commissioner races up. And so we may need a lot of remember at budget time that we we do. We do need a lot of. A lot of help in in this area. And it won't get done if we don't have that. Okay, Roxanne. Couple of the items that worked well, we've already talked about. We've spent a lot of money on upgrading equipments and electronic poll books, but we've gotten our money's worth. And they've worked well for us. The online training that Roxanne talked about was recommended in a study that you approved. That was very helpful. Moving west for supply pickup. The logistics there worked well for us. The cooperation with other county departments I've touched on, we've never needed it more and it's never worked better. The administration of the absentee locations and and so on worked very well. And this boils back down to the staff and we were able to add a couple of staff because of a study that the board approved. I don't know how we could have accomplished this without it. We didn't know at the time. That you approved these changes. That we were going to need them as desperately as we did. So it was pre-essence on your part to approve it. It really came in handy due to the number of locations, programs that we've added. Number of temporary workers all need training and supervision. The staff often works very independently. And handles issues as they arrive. So we have, we were able to assemble a bunch of self starters here and problem solvers to deal with this. Roxanne and I cannot manage all those temporary helpers in all these different locations. What changes I guess are up for Randy? My my only change that I would suggest going forward is that elections never makes presentation after environmental services at board meetings again. That's my only recommendation for changes.
You have my sympathy, Dave. Just because the presentation is for us doesn't mean there are positive experiences either, so.
I couldn't resist.
So you did ask about what what changes could be made looking forward to twenty twenty two. So we did put a few things together. One is the display of election night results on the Secretary of State site. So. As happened in Stearns County and across the state is not everything got in election night. Happens, but that's not happening now with the volume of absentee ballots that come in. On election day or the day before election day. The the temporary staff that we have are typically election judges that go work then in their precincts. So. We're down to a very small staff actually on election day. So the the results might say fourteen out of fourteen precincts reporting and people might think, well, that's a hundred percent reporting when that is not the case. There's still absentee ballots that need to be counted. So somehow on the Secretary of State site and we are going to put a communication together to them to. Adjust that they change to their site to reflect that, although this was widely advertised and known, it still was confusing. The second one is the state voter registration system. It did go down a few times on us and the biggest time it went down was a Saturday before the election. That really backed us up and caused a lot of problems. Caused a relatively large staff to work on Sunday to catch up because of the system going down. So. I think it's a good system, a stable system. I don't know if they need to up the the size of it or something, so we don't have any downtime, but. Any downtime during these very. You know, last days when things are really busy causes a lot of problems. Also, the system, when somebody applies for an absentee ballot, that doesn't show on the system. They apply for one and we accept it, I wish that would show up on the system so people don't keep on applying for an absentee ballot. That causes us. Additional time that we don't need or have. And also how it handles some of the computers or some of the mobile devices wasn't always good. I think it had some issues with how it worked with the Apple devices. I think it's a good system and a good basis. It just needs some data to make it a little bit stronger. The third point we talked about some already. So this is when people can put their absentee ballot right into the counter. So the public likes that, you know, being able to put it right into the counter rather than putting it into a secrecy envelope. It saves us administration time. We don't have to deal with. The sorting of those ballots and everything else. So it saves administration time and the voters also like this. But I know legislatively this will be something that we ask again and hopefully something like this can go through. The next one is cross county ability to offer direct voting. So. We do the ballots for all of St. Cloud, including the ballots in Sherburne and Benton County, and we opt to do that to help St. Cloud out. That's growing a lot, as you can imagine. And part of the problem is. City of St. Cloud cannot do that for Sherburne County, for instance. Because the law doesn't allow that right now. They would have to do it, I think, for the whole forty six days. So. We're I've talked to the auditor in Sherburne County and we're going to look at some legislation to tweak this to allow. The city of St. Cloud to do that rather than Stearns County to do that.
Question, and you just say out loud whether they can do it for Benton or is it solely us?
It's Benton and Sherburne County, right?
So they'd need it for those those ballots?
And there could be other cities in the state that affects also. But we'll be looking at that. It wasn't never intended that we would, this would be a permanent thing as Stearns County would. Do absentee balloting for people in other counties. And I think it was certainly appreciated, but we. The next point, right of options for the voters. So we had a number of options for voters, different places for them to have the ballot, different places for them to drop off ballots. I think it got very confusing for voters and we would have a telephone conversation with them. It got to be a very long conversation because of this only option. Well, I know that's one of the things we're going to look for for twenty twenty two is to get some consistency. And try to make this less confusing for voters. The next point is something we would like, but although I I don't think this would happen is. We're getting absentee ballot applications from so many sources now. They might go to Secretary of State's site. They might go to the county's site. They might get it from the parties. They fill out multiple applications and send it to the county and we have to. Sort that out and make sure they have one. And when other ones come in, we have to make sure they haven't got one already. And this takes a lot of time. So I'm assuming who can do the absentee ballot application would be helpful, although I don't anticipate that this one would change. And the last point is need for qualified temporary staff on a short notice. Well, this certainly happened at various times through the election, but certainly towards the end when there's this big rush and a lot of things to do. If some of the staff can't make it or there's various things that happen like the curbside voting. We're short on things. So qualified temporary staff on a short notice is something that. Those were some of the main changes that we were thinking about for twenty twenty two. Now, the town's left for questions.
I have quite a number of them. And I know that. I know that Randy and Dave did an excellent job with the rules that they're forced to work under. But I did call Randy ahead of time and and gave him a heads up on the questions I intended to ask. So. The first one is in the drop off area. It's my understanding that people were allowed to drop off up to three ballots. Is that's correct?
That's correct, yes.
No, okay, that's what's referred to as ballot harvesting. But anyway, could a person come through the? Well, first of all, did one of those ballots have to be their own?
Dave or Roxanne?
Yeah, so I can help with that. So the the. Voter is able to drop off their own ballot and three for other voters. Now, we are, we did, we do have to log those. And so we did log those into a Excel spreadsheet. So we actually, when when a voter drops off their ballot for someone else, they have to show identification. That they are who they are dropping off and then they have to. We have to list who they're dropping ballots off for. So we do have to log who is dropping off ballots for other people.
Could could a person conceivably do that more than one time? In other words, come through the line, drop off three, then go back through the line again, drop off three or come a different day?
It's possible, Jeff, and that's one of the areas we're going to look at technology in the next election to help us out with. Right now, we do log it. And we did look back to see if anybody did that and we didn't find anybody that was that. And of course, the people that are working the drop off are the same people every day, so they would see that. But that is an area where we're looking at doing some sort of live application that will put in their name. It would show if somebody's been there before. We didn't have time on this election to do that during the middle. But that is something we'll look at.
It's a Jeff's question on that one. Do you have an idea of the percentage that are dropping off family members? Like I know at one point I dropped off my husband's because he couldn't do it. In one election recently. Do you have any idea how many of its family members versus unrelated people or unrelated household kind of thing? Because I think that's part of the question I've been wondering too.
No, I, yeah, I don't, I don't have a feel for, you know. Whether it was a family member. My my guess is is that it was mainly for four family members, just. You know, the the few times I was down in the drive through, you know, people would come through and say, you know, I've got my mom and dad's ballots, so. Or, you know, my kid's ballots, so. I I I would guess that it was mainly family members that they were dropping off.
It might be worth trying to figure out in the future, just kind of going to part of what your question is about, Jeff. I mean, I think it's kind of different when you're bringing it for a family member and especially with COVID. I get that. And I know when the thing one that when I did that, I felt like I was signing my life away with that form.
Commissioners, for us to. For us to. We I did look through those spreadsheets on a daily basis. And then, of course, by the time we got to the last weekend, we were so swamped with other things that. We did lose a little bit of track over it and it's my intention to go back and do an analysis of it. However, the, you know, we we are aware we need to come up two years from now if we're going to continue this in multiple locations. That we're going to have to come up with some kind of real time tracking program for this. Now we have computers and like for the drive through, we have to have computers outside. It's it's a it's definitely a complicating factor. I don't think we saw, I'd be surprised if we had any of any illegal ones that were dropped off this time. Because of the safeguards we had in place, but we could certainly do more going forward to tighten this up. We were we were kind of making it up as we went along and. Who knew that we were going to get that many people, but.
Another question is, you know, the requirement for voting is to be a U.S. citizen. I did some research on this and. To be a U.S. citizen, you have to pass an English test. And you take an uphill this year and you take the test in writing. Now, there are some exceptions. One of the exceptions is called the fifty twenty rule. You're over fifty years old and been in the United States for twenty years, then you can take it in another language. Another exception is the fifty five fifteen rule, same thing. You're over fifty five and been here fifteen years. But, okay, so. You're supposed to be able to speak and write English. But yet, from what I understand, and I thought the limit was fifteen, but Randy tells me now there's no limit. That there are people that were helping other people to vote. And if those are the requirements, why why was this? Needed. And secondly, if that happened, were those votes set aside as provisional ballots? Until it was double checked if these people were in fact U.S. citizens?
I can start on this one. When when they do get entered and and doing the voter registration, there is checks to see if they're citizens. And if it's based on either if you're showing your driver's license or a check in the state system and if you've given us your social security number, there's a check there. So there is checks to see if they're a citizen. Some of those checks are happening, you know, they're doing the registration. Some of the checks are happening afterwards. And if they were caught doing that afterwards, we do get those reports and those reports would get sent to the attorney, to our. County Attorney's Office. And we've not had any of those in Stearns County. I think I think the reason for that is if you're not a citizen, you're probably not going to risk trying to vote. And caught that you're illegal alien in the county country. So.
Were there people helping multiple other people to vote?
What's that?
Were there people that were helping multiple other people to vote?
There were people helping fill out paperwork and then there then there is a number of people, I believe, that that's three days that you can help assist in marketing.
That law has changed. You can help an unlimited number of people. The 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 voter assistance program is legal in Minnesota. You can help as many people as you want. It was established typically. For an older generation of people who had problems filling an oval. Because they just got old or they couldn't read as well. And there's no, you know, you'd need legislation changes if you want to refine it. To limit people. So right now, anybody can help anybody else, including candidates for office can can help and assist and and so on. So all of that is illegal.
I'm sure you follow the rules. I was just wondering if it actually went on.
It's actually a benefit to us. So that we don't need, it moves our polling places that much faster if people do receive some assistance, if there's language barriers. The Secretary of State's office, the Secretary of State's office does provide materials. For example, the voter registration application in other languages. I think there's about fifteen different languages that are available. Provided by the state of Minnesota for people to register to vote on. We don't, we don't typically provide those. We could. And so if. And so if people need assistance with filling out those forms, it's really a benefit for us to do so. It really moves our polling places a lot along a lot faster rather than having our judges have to provide that assistance.
But, and I'm sure, you know, that's correct. According to my research, the applicants for U.S. citizenship must meet the strict eligibility requirements, pass an English and a civics test. So I'm questioning why that should be needed that often unless it's for somebody that's aged and so on, like you have indicated. Next question, what about people that do same-day registration? Are those ballots set aside as provisional ballots until that is all verified, their eligibility is verified?
Commissioner, there's no, Commissioner and Chair, Commissioner Murgan, there's no provision in Minnesota law for provisional ballots. There's no such a thing in Minnesota because we have same-day registration. So no ballots are set aside. They're either they're in, or if they're an absentee, they go by an absentee ballot board. But there's no, no set aside provisions in Minnesota law.
And there is, just on that, there is, Jeff, there's requirements they have to meet, that they have to show. And then like the rest of us, they still have to attest under, if they are attesting to something that is incorrect. And that's kind of over quite a long time, what we've done in Minnesota.
As Commissioner Clark is saying, you do have to verify, and there's, you know, you have to have a photo ID, you have to prove where you live. And we, you're turning away people every day because they don't have the proper documents. So there is checks on that before they do same-day registration.
And another area, were there any Dominion voting machines used in Stearns County?
No. I have a Dominion machine sitting here for people from Turbon County if they needed to do the assisted voting, but it was not used. So, and Stearns County does not use any Dominion voting machines.
Okay, thank you. But again, back to same, or back to same-day registration people, those ballots are immediately put into the computer, right?
They are.
They are, okay. So if later on found out that one of them was not properly there, there's no way to extract it?
Right.
Good, thank you. That's it.
Okay, any other questions? This was in the 2016 cycle, but while you're talking about ballots in different languages, in California in 2016, the last time I paid attention, ballots were written in eight different languages. So their ballots must have gone on for pages relative to the whole voting process. With votes coming from multiple sources and voting various ways, I found it remarkable that these questions would, well, in short, apparently there's been some education since election day, even to the board members. I do recall and appreciate the congratulatory emails I got from Steve and Jeff on election night on my results. But I had, was aware of some of these challenges in getting a countout. And I think the day, we have to educate local media, the day of having results, accurate results, or even vaguely accurate results, two hours after the polls close, that day has come and gone. There, the process on the backdoor process, shall we call it, is going to take much longer. And granted, we're giving people more options and more ways to vote, but it definitely complex, complicates the process and makes this stuff take longer. I hope about, the only local media person who has shown any detailed interest in the voting process was Bob Hughes at KNSI. I listened to Bob and Dave Walls have, do an excellent job just after the election about talking about, you know, these types of issues. Obviously, look how long our discussion has taken for them to get all of that in. But somehow, we have to let media know. I mean, I was getting called, I remember one call, let me see, where did I get it from? WJ1, congratulations, Lee, you got any feedback on the results? I thought you, no, I can't say it. Well, I thought it, okay. But anyway, you get the drift. So the multiple sources, the more ways you can vote, the more rules and regulations. I remember when, well, even when I was first elected, I still made fun of the voting process that they had in other countries where the votes, you know, the actual voting would take place, you know, for up to a 30-day period. Well, we're getting there. And it's, yeah, the one-day pop there no longer applies. And it's, we've got to make this investment. If folks lose confidence in the voting process, we're all up a creek, no paddle, God, no boat, no canoe. So I think this will get more challenging going forward. And just, there'll be more pressures on local government to deal with it. So I don't have any answers. I just kind of know, I can kind of tell, so can you, where this is going. So, yeah, election night results is, it's going out with high-button shoes. Any other questions or comments on this? Good job, Jeff, you picked up on this in terms of issues, voting issues. And I think more voting issues will come forward as, because the result, we're not done with this. This election stuff is going to be controversial for some time, you know? Yeah, the happy hour joke I made with a couple of my friends in a social setting, I said, well, the Mars lander, the exploratory device that NASA planted on the planet of Mars, and it's crawling around, finding out what's up there. They came across 850,000 ballots for president. I wonder how their ballots got up there. But anyway, the joke worked at happy hour. Go ahead.
We definitely need to move our meeting time then. Just a couple things. One is on the list of things to be looking at. I think I might have brought this up here before. I definitely talked to both Randy and Dave. I've actually had a number of constituents have asked why just townships and small cities get to opt for mail ballots only? And given the 92% voter participation rate, that may be something to continue looking at. Something additional that can be done, but let's face it, so many people are getting information through social media or other things. It gets to be also a little trickier to, you know, make sure that there really is good public access to that information. So I'm glad you brought that up.
I think we, we, Stearns County needs for this particular topic, needs to maybe produce some media for consumption by the outlets. I could see, well, yeah, this would make work for Randy and the folks that worked on the process. This would be an appropriate educational YouTube or video or something like that, just on a local basis, because you've got a raft of information there. Us election junkies would find that valuable. I'd be curious to see what, how much of that would be consumed by more of the broader public, but anyway. Thanks a lot. Anything else?
Mr. Chair, I just want to comment, just a thank you and an applause. Congratulations to Randy, Dave, Roxanne, and your staff, you know, the way you orchestrated and got through this process. Obviously, it's not easy always being under the microscope either for criticism, even because there's a lot of negative and irrational criticism out there as well. But any way we can get more people to participate legitimately and with accuracy, I think that strengthens our democracy. And so I just want to say I appreciate all your work.
Anything else, folks?
Anything else, folks?
I'll just make one comment. You know, legislatively, getting any election legislation done is very difficult, you know?
Oh, yeah.
And I think the auditors group is going to work on a small election administration bill that hopefully has non-controversial items in there. But as you can imagine, there is a lot of administration that happens. And I think some ways to make that more efficient with changes in the technology that we have with keeping all the security and sometimes making it more secure. So just supporting that, I think, would be helpful as you talk to your various legislators.
Well, thanks a lot. Well, thanks a lot. This is helpful and like all topics of specific interest, I suspect that maybe, you know, in all cases, you know, we'll be driving to our next appointment and a question will pop in our head, damn it, why didn't I ask that? So hold the thought. I predict there'll be another election in 2022. So your concern is valid. If there's no further questions, can we move on to the administrative item?
Thank you.
Oh, thank you, Randy and the crew that, this has really turned into an adventure. It used to be a pretty straightforward process.
I'll just make one quick point, Lee, if I could, is certainly the board's been very supportive and don't underestimate that effect on the staff. I think that really is helpful when the board is supportive of the item. So thank you for that.
Thank you, Randy.
Thank you.
Thank you, Randy. I hope that the concern demonstrated by our election administrators is a more universal phenomenon than I suspect media would report on. But then again, does written media know what's going on? So, thank you. Dr. Willie, you want to lead us to the promised land here?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. And I think Marlese will actually walk you through your committee appointments. I will get them on the screen so that you can see them as well.
All right, Mr. Chair, members of the board, Marlese Tanner, Office Services Supervisor. And as in past years, I'm here today to walk you through the appointment worksheet, just in a different mode. This year's appointments can be found on packet pages 460 to 467. And I'll again address the committees one at a time. And after reviewing the entire worksheet, the board can move all appointments in a single motion. As indicated in the, on the worksheet, a single asterisk denotes those members who are interested and eligible for reappointment, and a double asterisk denotes those who are either not interested or have reached term limits. So we'll start again on packet page 460. The first committee under Environmental Services is the Board of Adjustment. The Planning Commission representative is currently Sean Blackburn. If that changes, sometimes it does, it would be the Planning Commission's recommendation who serves, that would be the representative. An interested and eligible for reappointment in the at-large slot is Jacob Hope. If there's no discussion on the Board of Adjustment, I'll move along to the aquatic.
Just a big picture comment. I got into a paper shuffling exercise here at the desk. I wanted to, and this is philosophical, I'm not proposing any changes to the way we do this, just make the observation, in terms of committees that county board members serve on, the two polar opposites in how we appoint county commissioners to the various committees is we've evolved over the years from a process where we used to make a point of rotating commissioners through various boards, commissions, and committees, to a process where they tend to, we tend to be serving on the same bodies on a more continual basis. And here's the benefit and also the liabilities of both processes. The benefit of doing it like we're doing it now is that board members get more familiar, in some cases, very familiar with the processes and progress or lack of therein to that individual committee. The disadvantage of doing it that way is that we lack appreciation for what the other committees are doing. I'll give you, you know, my favorite example, and one of my more favorite committees that I don't serve on is Historical Society, the Sterns History Museum. Jeff serves on that. There isn't, there isn't a problem with the organization. They're doing a fine job. He must enjoy it. He gets reappointed. On the other hand, I don't know, much beyond going in and talking to staff, which I do maybe once a year, twice a year, I wouldn't know what's going on there. But I'm going to, I operate in the committees that I'm not on, is no news is good news, and life is good. So those are the two extremes. Just hold the thought going forward. I won't peer forever, but I think folks are starting to wonder. And go ahead, Marlese.
All right. The second committee on the worksheet is the Aquatic Invasive Species Awards Panel, currently Commissioner Clark, Cole Lowen, and Greg Bird. The Delinquent Refuse Account Appeals Panel, currently Commissioner Clark with Commissioner Notches the alternate, Tim Oswald, Troy Fryhammer, an environmental specialist alternate, and Paula Sexton as the non-voting liaison. And the Feedlot Review Committee, the staff rotate on an annual basis. Next year's representative from the staff would be Shelby Richard Hoffman, with Bethy Jo Jutton as the alternate, Amber Melkey as the second alternate. The current township officer representative is James Weller. That's at the recommendation of the Town Officers Association at their annual meeting and could be subject to change. Also, Nate Hilla from SWCD, Dennis Fooks is the alternate, Ken Mossman as the ag producer. This year's extension committee also, staff also had some changes. Dana Adams is now going to be assuming that role with Nathan Drewitz as the alternate. And again, Kent, Jay- And again, Kent James Hemisch is like the Town Officers Association. The Municipal League rep can be subject to change, but will likely remain the same. Moving on to the Planning Commission, currently Commissioner Persky with Commissioner Mergan as the alternate. Interested and eligible for reappointment from the 5th District is Michael Correll. And Interested and Eligible for the at-large slot is Richard Blankish. Moving on to the second page of the worksheet, the Plating Committee, Jeff Miller, Mike Decker is the alternate, Greg Berg with Wayne Simblich as the alternate, Brian Cannon, Steve Holtos as the alternate. A Planning Commission representative, which again could change, is currently Commissioner, or Jeff Bertram from the Planning Commission, Jennifer Buckantine with Heidi Wenskowski as the alternate. Wetland Rules Committee, currently Commissioner Notch with Commissioner Mergan as the alternate, Cole Lowen, this year's staff representative, or this year's alternate would be Jennifer Kamitski as the first alternate, and Jared Booms as the second alternate. Greg Berg, Dennis Fooks as the alternate, Matt Zinnio with Jody Tyke as the alternate. Wetland Appeals Panel, currently Commissioners Mergan, Lenzmeyer, and Notch, and Scott Henderson. The Environmental Services Fee Appeals Panel, Solid Waste, currently Commissioner Clark, Jeff Johnson, Steve Holtos, Troy Fryhammer, Tim Oswald, and Paula Sexton. That will take us to the Extension Committee Appointments. The first of which is the Dairy Advisory Committee, currently Commissioners Notch and Clark. Interested and eligible for reappointment are Sean Hogarty, Joe Gill, and Joe Borgerting. That takes us to the Extension Committee. Presently Commissioner Notch and Mergan, Randy Schreifels. And then I forwarded to the board on Friday an application of a qualified candidate. And if the board so chooses, I can introduce that candidate for appointment. Commissioner Notch, does that meet your approval?
Yep, I would say I'd be okay with that.
That person is Ann Smith Bleichner. Again, Ann Smith Bleichner, B.L.E.I.C.H.N.E.R., and she is from District 5 and would assume the at-large position on the Extension Committee. That takes us to the Highway Department Boards and Committees, first of which is the Area Planning Organization Policy Board. Currently Commissioner Persky with Commissioner Lenzmeyer as the alternate. The Area Planning Organization Tech Advisory Committee, Jody Tyke. Region 7W Transportation Committee, currently Commissioner Persky. Highway 23 Coalition, Commissioner Persky with Commissioner Mergan as the alternate. There is no action necessary.
If I could comment on that, the meeting time is scheduled, as scheduled. We usually meet monthly, the third Wednesday, but we have a monthly meeting.
Okay. Yes, I'd like to update that. Thank you. All right. The Human Resources Personnel Board of Appeals, no action is necessary this year. And the Human Services Board, of course, is all commissioners. Which takes us to the second, or the fourth page of the worksheet, packet page 463. And that's a continuation of Human Services Committees, which would be the Human Services Advisory Committee. Currently Commissioner Clark. Interested and eligible for reappointment are Tom Lands, Mary Walker, Danny Wool, Grace Egbert, Kelly Corpella, Zachary Dor, and Zachary Dorho. And recruitment is ongoing for the 5th District Citizen Rep. State Community Health Services Advisory Committee. The next two appointments on the worksheet is my understanding Commissioners Clark and Notch would like to rotate or swap. So the State Community Health Services Advisory Committee representative for next year would become Commissioner Clark with Commissioner Notch as the alternate. And the Regional Emergency Medical Services Representative would become Commissioner Notch with Commissioner Clark as the alternate.
Yeah, and if I could add on to that, Marlis. If you guys didn't know, Tarrell was elected Vice Chair for the State Community Health Services Advisory Committee. So congratulations to her on that. I think it's a two-year appointment, right, Tarrell?
Yes. And thank you, Steve.
And I currently have the Regional EMS position previously held by Renee Froun Dinesh as vacant. All right, moving on to the Community Corrections Advisory Board. Currently Commissioner Clark with Commissioner Notch as the alternate. Recommended for the law enforcement profession is Jeff Oxton. And Commissioner Mergan has a District 3 representative that he'd like to recommend, who is Tom Ellinger, E.H.L.I.N.G.E.R. From the Public Defender's Office, Chung Lo's reached term limits, Heidi Hobis. H.O.B.I.S. is recommended to replace Chung Lo. And Tom Lands from District 4. Family Services Collaborative Joint Powers Board. Currently Commissioners Mergan and Notch with Commissioner Persky as the alternate. The Coalition Advancing Healthy Families Joint Power Board, Powers Board. Commissioner Clark with Commissioner Notch as the alternate. And the SHIP Community Leadership Team, Commissioner Clark. That takes us to the Park Department Appointments. First of which is the Park Commission, presently Commissioner Persky. Lucas Sostrom from District 5 is Interested and Eligible for reappointment, as is Sean Gates from District 1. The current Planning Commission representative is Richard Blankish. And that again will be determined by the Planning Commission if it continues to be Richard or another representative. The Parkland Dedication Fee Committee, currently Commissioners Persky and Commissioners Persky and Mergan. The Park Director, the Environmental Services Director, and a staff person from the County Attorney's Office. Recruitment is currently underway, I believe, or will be shortly, for the Sauk River Watershed District Vacant Representative. And the board representative on that committee is Commissioner Notch. That takes us to the North Fork Crow River Watershed District, which is currently Commissioner Notch. The West Central Minnesota County and Watershed Joint Powers Board, Commissioner Notch with Commissioner Lenzmeyer as the alternate. The Crow River Joint Powers Board, Commissioner Mergan with Commissioner Notch as the alternate. The Noxious Weeds Appeals Committee, moving on, is established each year by Minnesota State Statute by Resolution, which was on today's consent agenda, with the board chair always named as the representative and all commissioners as the alternates. That takes us to the non-departmental appointments, which include the AMC Delegates, which are all commissioners, Administrator, Auditor Treasurer, and Human Services Administrator. Career Solution Joint Powers Board, currently Commissioners Mergan and Lenzmeyer. The Central Minnesota Council on Aging, which is Commissioner Clark and Commissioner Lenzmeyer. The Central Minnesota Economic Development 7W District Board, presently Commissioners Persky and Lenzmeyer. Community Adult Mental Health Initiative Joint Powers Board, currently Commissioner Notch. And Julie Ellis would be the staff person from Human Services, not Melissa Huberty. Criminal Justice Coordinating Committee, presently Commissioners Notch and Clark with Commissioner Persky as the alternate. Michael Williams, Steve Hamis, Steve Soika, John Lenz as the alternate, Mark Maslinkowski, Jeff Oxton, Blair Anderson, Janelle Kendall, Ollie Tuckman, Justin Leison, Michael Lieberg, Judge David Kelfen, Becky Bales-Cramlett, George Locke, Rex Tucker, Shannon Avenson, James Ilias, Melissa Huberty, Dan Miller, Julie Ellis, Richard Lee, Judge Hennessy, Renee Courtney, and Kathy Parsons. The Emergency Services Board is next on the list, presently Commissioner Lenzmeyer with Commissioner Notch as the alternate. The Emergency Services Board Users Committee, Aaron Tufti, Bob Dickhouse, James Hughes, Kristen Lar, and Paul McIntyre. That takes us to page 466 in the board packet. Great River Regional Library, currently Commissioner Lenzmeyer. Interested and eligible for reappointment from the 2nd District is Zura Anjam. And there is a recommendation, or applicant for the District 5 vacancy. Commissioner Notch, did you wish to proceed with that applicant? If so, I can introduce the name.
Yes.
Okay.
Please.
That would be Alan Amdal. A.M.D.A.H.L. Again, Alan Amdal. The History Museum Board, Commissioner Mergan. The HRA Board, Commissioner Mergan. And the District 3 representative's term has expired as well. And Commissioner Mergan would like to introduce Stephen Nies, N.I.E.S., as his recommendation for that vacancy. La Library, currently Commissioner Lenzmeyer. The Minnesota Inter-County Association, Commissioners Clark and Lenzmeyer with Commissioner Mergan as the alternate. The Minnesota Counties Computer Cooperative, Randy Schreifels as the delegate and Jeff Johnson as the alternate. The Painesville Airport Zoning Board, Shelley Benson and Jennifer Buckantine. The Region 7W SEDS Strategy Committee, Michael Williams. The Region 7W SED Joint Powers Board, Commissioners Lenzmeyer and Persky. The Regional Airport Authority, no action is necessary at this time, as the board will recall. These Marshall Grahams and David Weirs were appointed earlier in the year. Regional Rail Authority, Commissioners Clark and Park, Lenzmeyer, and DeNotch. Sauk Center Joint Airport Zoning Board, Shelley Benson and Heidi Wenskowski. St. Cloud Airport Advisory Committee, Commissioners Lenzmeyer and Clark. Greater St. Cloud Development Corporation, Commissioner Lenzmeyer with Commissioner Clark as the alternate. The St. Cloud Area Joint Planning District Board, Commissioner Mergan with Commissioner Persky as the alternate. That takes us to the last page of the worksheet. The St. Cloud Benton Sherburne Sterns Joint Airport Zoning Board, Commissioners Lenzmeyer and Clark. The Tax Abatement Committee, Commissioners, Commissioner Notch with Commissioner Mergan as the alternate. Michael Williams, Randy Schreifels, Neil Fortier, and Jeff Johnson. Lastly on the list is the Tri-County Solid Waste Management Commission. Commissioners Mergan, Clark, Persky, and Lenzmeyer with Commissioner Notch as the alternate and Michael Williams as the alternate, as a second alternate. And again, that completes the summary of the worksheet this year. If the board would like to move all of those appointments on a single motion, you could do so at this time.
I do have one question, Marlis.
Yes.
Did you have, I noticed on the Dairy Advisory Committee, there's a vacancy for a producer. Did you have an applicant for that?
Not at this time. I was told by extension that there was someone who may be interested in applying, but I have yet to receive an application.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Otherwise, I'll move, I'll move the appointments.
All right, do we have a second? Can I hear a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Unless there's an objection, I'll assume that all votes would be aye, so I don't have to go through the roll. Okay, sounds like you're not a shy group. Nobody objected. The one request I'd like, you know, the first quarter of every year, even when things are abnormal, we often use as a planning or strategy or where are we going forward type of session. I would wonder if we're, now, 2020 is a lousy year to do this statistically. But going, start with the year, most recent year being 2019. I'd be interested in how often each of these committees has met over, say, a three-year period. I think that for, things evolve and change. For example, you know that there's going to be a change in airport-related types of committees and so forth. And maybe we, in terms of public edification, maybe we need even to do a basic name change, like our rail authority now was designed, if we got in the rail business, it's now really a Trails Authority. Maybe it's time to make some of those updates. But that's a matter for further edification. I've been lobbied heavily in the last 15 minutes with this conclusion of this particular item, that we would take a break. I now declare a break. See you guys in about five, six minutes.
Over the years and at this point, that's the reason. And in your, each of you in your own case is, has to make a judgment like you do on every item that we take up and go from there. Since I was the only contested individual in this most recent campaign, did it, you know, you do what you do in a campaign and compensation did not come up. So that's been my experience base. Also learned that, boy, you know, geographically, my district is really pretty small, not quite as geographically small as Terrell's, but it's fairly small. And boy, is there a difference in mindset from the south end of the district in the Clearwater area to say Division Street. It's, it's, it's becoming an adventure, a wide dispersion of opinions. But I'm definitely going to make the case that raise is appropriate. If you look at our salary history, I, you know, the typical way of discussing this matter compared to other counties, I don't really care about other counties, but I know what we do. And we're getting the job done. The, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna propose a salary increase and based on just the way I feel and you look at our salary increases, we've been a pretty good deal, you know? If the rest of government operated like we do, it's been fair. So I usually, no, I sell, I can't remember in my current tenure where I've actually made a motion, but let's get this game started. I move we increase the commissioner's salaries 2,100. Based on what? Because I think so. Any question? We need a second. There's no second? Motion dies for lack of a second.
Mr. Chair, I would make a motion that we increase it by 3%, which would be $1,124.
Well, let's see if you can get a second and we'll talk about it. Do we have a second? Do we have a second?
Mr. Chair, could we just, could we have a bit of a conversation before? I know sometimes we talk before the motion, sometimes we talk after, and I know you got a chance to talk a bit. I'm kind of wondering where other people are.
I'll ask the motion maker. He can make the call.
Yeah, well, that's why I just thought, well, I'm gonna throw it out there. We get the second, we can have the discussion and either passes or fails.
All right, I'll, I'll second it.
All right, take it away. Terrell? Got a second? What's, what's your, what's your discussion?
Well, no, I'm actually wondering where others are. I mean, I, I believe our compensation is off, I think, especially since we don't count per diem or other things, and we probably should modernize it. I have also personally had some internal struggles with making sure that we have the, this year, just this one year, that we've got the, the levy funds coming in, just given what the impact on some other people are. So I, I think what, I mean, certainly what you put out there would still mean that we're a very good value for the dollar, Mr. Chair. I think that what Commissioner Knott is suggesting probably is a bit more in line with where maybe the broader, broader picture is right now. But at some point, we probably should figure out, how do we really determine what this should be? Because as you said, just saying, how do we compare to others isn't enough. But what is it we're doing? How is it we're doing? And how are we compensated? Recognizing all of us can make a heck of a lot more in almost any other sector. So we're not, none of us are doing this for the money at all.
I guess I would have a couple of comments. I, I think any salary increases should be brought up in August or September before the county budget is set. And, and also with what the private sector is going through right now, I, I just don't feel that it's proper time to be raising salaries.
And I don't subscribe to the Wall Street Journal, but I talk to employers that I know. And the economic impact of this whole recent experience has been different for different businesses. For some businesses, you know, these times couldn't be better than free beer. But for other businesses, if you're in the hospitality business, you're, you're right up there with the Maytag repairman. Those commercials are old, but I think, you know, while I might be the senior member of this august body, the reality is those are recent enough, you remember that. He wasn't particularly busy individual. The punchline is, is I think, well, no, I don't think, I somewhat concur with Jeff. Yeah, we ought to be discussing compensation at least a couple of times during New Year. And if you want to start that in August, as long as it doesn't come up on every damn agenda item, great. But yeah, without, without a doubt, there's merit in pursuing that. And like I said, this doesn't, doesn't come up. Now, the issues that do, that do come up varies by, in, in, in campaigns, varies by individual commissioner. For example, I predict in 2024, should I run again? Longevity will be a big issue. Why, why do I know that? Because it came up this year and it came up in 2016. And I guess I just don't attract a particularly creative group of opponents because that seems to be about as good as they can do. Much beyond that, yeah, compensation does, does need a review. The county commissioners statewide vary in quality. Typically, you can, and what's the appropriate barometer of comparison? Should it be the counties next to us? Should it be the MICA counties? I don't know. But the, the good news is, since I have a longest-term perspective on this, this operation overall is a dramatically different organization than it was in the early 90s. And in addition, the variety of activities that we have to get, that we get into is also vastly different. The notion that a county board is this sleepy body that, you know, just rolls along, it isn't anymore. And our issues aren't particularly flashy. In fact, they're kind of miserable. Jeez, criminal prosecutions, God, that's fun. Social welfare issues, jeez, that's a blast. Elderly in nursing homes, oh, gosh, oh, so much fun. So the, we do, we're a nuts and bolts unit of government, and that's, that's what you got going forward. Has anybody else got some input? We don't have a motion in a second on the floor. Go ahead.
I'm wondering, I, I mean, I certainly agree with Jeff and you, you know, it would be good to start the conversation or the looking at earlier, as long as we're not talking about it at every meeting. I am wondering if at that point, we might want to revisit the per diem, since many of the places are still doing it. That might be something that also should be considered. I'm not sure what I think of it, but it might be. There is some irony, given what you were talking about with the history and what they got with per diem and other occupations, so just saying.
Any other input on this? I mean, there's, there's all kinds of aspects, ways of looking at this. If you think, you know, if you think we're making too much money as individual commissioners, there are decisions you can make as individuals. For those of you that would feel that way, I'd offer you the opportunity to contact, you'd have to go into Randy's department, but they'll certainly let you review my expense submissions to the last five years. That's a decision that I've made. So, yeah, if you want to take a deep dive into this, you know, I'm definitely for it, but the way we've been handling it is unimpressive. And it hasn't, it just hasn't resonated as an issue, even though my opponent this last time around ran as, on a conservative basis, didn't even bring that up. So, yeah, been an adventure. So anybody else got anything you want to weigh in on? Otherwise, we do have a motion in a second on the floor. So.
Go ahead. You know, Leah, if I can just maybe interject a little bit too, you know, I guess I was always like, oh, you know, don't want to raise, don't want to raise, don't want to raise. But then sometimes I look at two different things, you know, okay, two out of you three didn't have competition, which can say you're doing a really good job, or it can lend to individuals looking at doing it might feel, you know, they can't justify spending as much time for that type of pay either. You know, because I just look at, you know, some of the things I'm involved, like Soccer Watershed, and a lot of times that's three hours a meeting, Northport Watershed, you know, it's three, you know, you start adding all this up and, you know, all the time, granted I have the furthest, always seems like the drive when it comes to meetings and stuff like that. You know, there's, there is a big time commitment. I mean, I know there's, I get mileage, you know, reimbursement, and, you know, and you get, you know, the health insurance stuff, but there's, there's something to be said too about the, you know, the value of your time and taking the time to answer phone calls, go visit with constituents, and be there for them. I don't know, that's just my.
Any other?
Granted, I save money this year without all my mileage, but.
I'm not saying y'all should do that. I'm just saying that we do individually can make decisions if we don't agree with the compensation. And some of us are in a better physical position to make those kinds of decisions than others. My, my, my whole point along, all along has been why this seems to be a one-size-fits-all consideration, when it really isn't the case. And, you know, and to your credit, you know, as a group, this is the best group I've served with, Marlis put together a list of the folks that I've served with in my tenure. I'll have to at a future meeting read all those names off, and it's, in some cases, it's quite a cast of characters, but it's been an adventure. I don't know, campaigns maybe may have become kind of a hobby. Now, there's cheaper hobbies, but I look back into my, even back to my teens, I, I've been involved in expensive hobbies right along. So that's how it is. Any other comments on compensation? But that's how we'll look at this in the future, you know, it isn't just about.
Mr. Chair, I will comment, because I have, I've been one that has never voted for a pay increase in a position that I've held publicly. But with the things that have been said here and taking a look at where we are, there's no question that I think we need to move the compensation forward this time. And I would have no trouble supporting the motion. I, I, I think if we just delay it, we delay it, it's not going to move and, and it will remain an, an issue that it is, and I have no trouble, I guess, supporting moving it forward at this time.
Any, any other comments? The, you know, I appreciate the discussion. I mean, Jesus, I think of the last, last year, the, that was sad, because there's, there's, you know, there's rational perspective on this. And I guess also that the final comment I would make is just because you didn't have an appointment, doesn't mean you're doing a good job, but that's a facetious comment. Also, what I have noticed over my tenure is the more outspoken you are, the more likely you are to attract an opponent. But that's how it goes, you know? I mean, they have, they have to make a case for their perspective, I have to make a case for mine, and it's been an adventure. And boy, has my district changed in the last four years. Holy smokes, that was an eye-opener. But that said, I don't think anybody else has got anything, and I don't want to be here until midnight, so all those in favor, say aye. District one.
Aye.
Two. Aye. Three.
Me.
District four, aye. District five.
Aye.
All right, we got something done. Jeff, enjoy your TRA, Military and Social Security. Have a nice day. Well.
Thank you.
Yeah, we'll have a 2021 strategic plan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to share my screen if I can. But what you have before you is what we call the 2021 strategic plan. And are you seeing that now? Anyway, you have it in the package. And we started this work, if you recall, at a normal annual retreat way back in March. And we actually, I think it was two days later, on Thursday or Friday, we had our first cases of COVID-19 in, in Stearns County, and then the kind of the world was turned upside down on us. And so we ignored this for a while, and knowing that we thought it would need to change as time went on, or as, you know, as the year went on. And, but then a couple of months ago, your leadership team and I picked it up, and we did have the facilitation services of Richard Fersman, who was, who was with us in March. And when, when the board was, we were together, I think we, we got pretty much this far with it. We had these sort of, these vision statements where we would have a safe and healthy community, and we'd have our great organizational culture, and improve our community partnerships. And we began to talk about some action steps. And at that time, the plan really was going to be that the leadership team then took that work and kind of got more specific with action planning, and then to bring it back to the board. And that's a nice way to do it, I think, because the board as policymakers set that broad direction, and the, and the leadership team and employees as, as administration, and really should come up with the action plan, because they're going to be doing much of the work. And so what we did is we came up here with, as you can see, we have three categories here. Engaging, educating, empowering, improving process and services, and improving infrastructure. And there's a number of action steps under each one of those. There's 30 action steps here that support 30-some, two-year success statements. And so the thought here is that the board was able to review this and can, can approve it in one shape, way, shape, or form, and then that will become our strategic plan for the coming year. We will begin to do what we can to implement, implement the plan and the action steps, and it'll be a conversation piece at leadership team meeting, and hopefully a couple of reports back to the board. You can see in here that we have people assigned to each of these, and actually, when we'll try to get this, these things done. And then we've switched up our, our year next year, so that we would go into our strategic planning session with the board and the leadership team in October. It's already on the calendar that you approved at your last meeting. And, and that is a day that we would devote not, it's, it's an off-board meeting day, so we can devote a little more time to looking back, see how we're doing, and tweak this plan for the future. So that's, that's this agenda item in a nutshell. It's, as, as, as I said, we worked on it in a number of meetings, maybe three or four meetings with the leadership team, kind of taking each one of these sections and trying to create somewhat of an action plan for these three areas of action and improvement. So there's a lot, there's a fair amount of detail there. I don't think I need to go through that, but if you have questions or comments, I'm certainly happy to try to answer them.
Any comments, questions, observations by board members? It's a small item, but one thing going forward relative to, I don't know if it falls into strategies, but certainly a review. We just went through all of those committees. Some of those committees are really dated, and my, my, my suggestion in, in an ordinary year would be, well, how many times have they met, you know, in the last couple of years, whatever? But some of them are dating out. For example, the ones relating to the airport, that's going to be a different organization, and it's, we'll have a much better idea what that is in 2021 than we do right now. But the committees that are set up to address that, you know, some of those, like maybe some other committees on that list, some of those, their time has come and gone. So we need to take a look at that. So I wish, as we get into that, that'd be one of the considerations. Is this as important as some of the other big picture stuff? Probably not, but we should be more on top of it than we are. So let's, let's hold that thought. Any other ideas on strategic plan? I'm glad we did that.
I have one. I looked through it, there's a lot of buzzwords in there, but, and the one that I looked, kept looking for that I could not find is the word transparency, and gonna bring that up again later.
All right, that's it.
Nope, that's a good, good thought. I think, you know, one of the, one of these is really trying to improve our, our, our relationship with the community, and that is a, a nice word that should, could be included in here somewhere.
And certainly that fits with communication as well. And Mr. Chair, I've been thinking similarly to you, and I think too, as we look through both honoring the service that some folks have given us for decades, also thinking about, and I think the plan, the proposed plan addresses part of this, is how are we getting more newer people engaged? Kind of like when we saw the huge amount of people who were interested in the new Regional Airport Authority, you know, what are we doing? And I think each of us tries to reach out to folks, but, you know, what are, what are we doing to help encourage more people to be engaged? And in some cases, certainly from a broader diverse standpoint, but even within women, we still have some communities that either don't have any or have hardly any. And so would love to see us continue to see how we can work on that. And then just lastly, this has come up in a few different places, is perhaps encouraging our task forces and commissions to rotate chairs like we do. They give, gets a chance for the same reasons we do, to have different voices, helping move the, facilitate the meeting along. And we do have some people on each of these committees that on their own are unlikely to step forward, but would be good leaders.
Yeah, a commissioner contest will introduce a lot of new people into the process. Certainly does in District Four. So the, you know, and Terrell, you've had some experience with that as well, so that, and the basic demographic, it isn't just along the lines of gender. The basic demographics of the county is changing dramatically, and the way the various, the, the issues and the actions of the various demographics vary dramatically. But I'll get into that another time, it'd be a great happy hour topic. Anything else for the strategic plan? If there isn't, we can talk about legislative priorities.
Do we need to take an action on this, Mr. Chair?
That would be nice.
Okay, I'll move adoption.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Great, thank you. Oh, Joe, okay. Any other discussion? If not, all of the papers, say aye. Okay, I assume that's acquiescence, and without a, a negative vote, we don't need roll call. All right, thank you. Legislative priorities?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As we've done in the past few years, we've, we've developed some priorities to discuss with our legislative delegation, and that report is, was documented, was included in your packet. One thing I didn't do this year was a recap from last year. I thought that that was, maybe we could not, we didn't need to do that this year, since the legislature was faced with COVID-19 like the rest of us, and their session didn't go very normal either. But we do have our priorities, at least the recommended priorities there, and I know there could be more, but we try to keep this to a manageable number, so we try to prioritize. But of course, this is your tool, then you could add and subtract as you fit. I do recall after a meeting, I think it was two years ago, that we had 10, and I had a couple of legislators say how much they appreciate us, showing just, you know, not so many, so that they really knew what was most important to us. I don't think we want this to get so broad like a, like an AMC platform or a MICA platform. And, and you see those entities now focusing on, you know, six or eight or 10 key things too. So that's what we're trying to do here, and you can see we have four under the Human Services and Public Safety, and that's to keep the waivers in place, mental health and substance abuse, the, the mental health and substance abuse crisis, a budget for community correction at counties, that was, I think, on our list last year, and then adequate funding to support child protection services, and then enact the Central Minnesota Human Trafficking Task Force legislative policy changes that were actually made it through a House committee last year. So there's five under Human Services this year. The four under Transportation are very similar, I believe, to what we had last year. So really no, no significant changes there. And then a few under the General, which is kind of as usual CPA, and we set at least current levels with this statement, because we know there, there very well could be a budget, a lot of budget issues. Broadband, which was there last year. And we made support of, of reducing mandates, an item of its own here, and listed some, some examples, and then, which was also on ours last year, the last one was registration or filing for motor vehicle driver's license to allow those to be increased. The rest of the document is really the detail behind all of this. And so the plan here would be, whatever we end up with today as a, as an approved list, we would forward that on to our legislators with the invitation. We would forward that on to our legislators with the invitation to meet with us next Tuesday morning. And we already have, I believe, at least half of them saying that they can make that, that meeting on Tuesday morning. So I'm pretty sure that's when we'll end up with that meeting. And I'm happy to try to answer any questions. And I know I have other staff members here if we really have to give any detail on any of these priorities.
Do we have any questions, comments, observations on legislative priorities? When you absolutely positively got that nailed down, Dr. Willie, next Tuesday, you'll do a correspondence with us, I'm sure.
I just have one observation. I, I noticed number thirteen introduces a proposal for another tax increase. That's my observation.
I, I guess I would class as Randy. It's, it's more of a fee to cover the service. So real ID takes over three times as long as the regular driver's license. This is countering that time and the cost that have gone up significantly.
That's another one of those things in my, from my perspective, that's in the same category as election administration. You know, from the public perspective, well, you know, so-and-so got so many votes and so-and-so got so many votes and that's the end of it when in fact the process has gotten a lot more complicated. Yeah, real ID. Obviously, some aspect of security in the administration of identification, that ought to be pretty straightforward. You are who you are, but apparently you're not. So you need those types of things in place or it's been determined that we do. So there you are. And what, you know, it's the old government solution. You spread the costs among the widest group of folks that you can. But it's not a disagreement. I mean, Jesus, I wish, I wish that wasn't the case. But I'll hand it to you. I'm, I'm encouraged, you know, these legislative options in the past, without a doubt, and maybe, maybe even now, it still has that sitting on Santa's lap type of quality to it, you know? We want this, we want that, we want this and that. No wonder they look at us like, what the hell planet did you come from? But so it goes.
Hey, Mr. Chair, can I ask Randy a question? How many, how many private entities in Stearns County do real ID?
I think just the one in South Central. What happens with the ID stuff is we, we first do more services than they do. But we don't get a fee increase, it's just going.
And do they each set their own fee?
What's that?
Does everybody, every one of these DMVs and stuff set their own fees for doing things?
No, they're all state fees. The states legislatively, they're set.
Except for this real ID?
Real ID is state set. So it's, it's the same fee it's been for a lot of years. Now we're doing real ID and it hasn't adjusted for the change in real ID. So if, if we don't pick it up through the fee, through the user fee, we'll pick it up through property tax.
Right.
Pick your poison, I guess.
Right. So, so it's, it's, the increase is allowable via the state fee schedule.
Right.
Okay, thanks.
Might we want to clarify then that it's due to the increased costs with real ID? I mean, we might just, I, I know you've got the deeper dive for each of these, but it might, I think you only have to add a word or two. We don't want them to think it's for another reason.
Certainly we have that in the, in the, in the longer description too, but
Absolutely.
Attack it on, yeah.
Mr. Chair, I'll move the legislative priorities.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Terrell. I think it's too long, but gosh, we gotta get something done. You're right. Encourage that people are recognizing that doing this to legislators is cruel and unusual punishment. All those in favor say aye. If anybody is opposed, please note it. Otherwise, I presume this was unanimous. Thank you, folks.
Mr. Chair, I would just want to respond a little bit. Mike, you said that we didn't get a confirmation from all the legislators. Do we have pretty much the majority with just one or two missing?
I, I think that's where we are now. Yes, I know even as early as this morning, we had at least half, so.
Okay, and, and, and I guess, I guess I consider our priorities, priorities and very important. And oftentimes we're representing the people that they represent, otherwise we wouldn't be doing it. But even with this time of COVID, I think it's more important that we actually have contact with them on these, you know, virtual meetings because we're not going to meet with them down there. And so the ones that do not attend, perhaps if they're from our district, perhaps the individuals from that district and you could meet and go over them with them, because again, we, we just don't do these for the sake of doing these. And, 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 you know, it's just a matter of, oh, here comes the county, they're asking for this. And well, it's, it's the annual meeting. And I, I, I think it takes away from their importance and the work that we do if we don't actually have that contact and talk to them about these issues. So we'll get them one way or the other. They either come to this meeting or we'll come after them.
Regardless, even, you know, but regardless of party affiliation or any other type of circumstance, our delegation has been fairly accessible in, in my tenure. The, I think back, yeah, I can't think of a bad experience with a legislator. I mean, clearly you're going to come up with stuff where you disagree, but that's the nature of the beast. So anyway, yeah, the stuff we ask for is all important, but yeah, without a doubt, every legislative session, you're only going to get a couple items. So we gotta pick our poison maybe a little more, a little, with a little bit more discipline.
Although I will say, Mr. Chair, is that as you all know, since each committee looks specifically at the items under their jurisdiction and our voices with others actually can make a difference and looking at those, you know, it's also the persistent impatience thing. Some of these might not, we may or may not get here this year, but for example, like with comprehensive transportation funding, we don't know how important that is. If we ever take it off our list, they're going to consider it to be, oh, they don't need it. And then we'll hear from our constituents.
Okay. Anything else on this? Otherwise, the last item that I see here is approving a 2021 budget and tax levy. Dr. Willie, you want to take it away?
I will. Thank you, Mr. Chair. There's, don't have too much to say today. We talked about this in a, a number of meetings, but if you remember, the preliminary budget was approved at an increase in levy of 1.5%, 1.49%. And at the truth and taxation meeting, we presented a budget that was lowered down to an increase in levy of 1.2%. And you can see the proposed total here of $164 million in expenditures. We have revenues of about $80 million and then the tax levy of 83.8 million. We do have a nice increase this year in the property tax capacity. And so that increase in the levy will, will the tax cap capacity increases over 5%. That 1.2% increase in the levy will still allow us to lower the tax rate to buy nearly 3.8% down to 0.485. And if you remember the impact on typical properties, of course, if there's no change in valuation, of course, a drop in the rate is just going to mean a drop in, drop for every property in the county. We know that's probably not the case and more likely we have a small increase or an increase in residential, a little bit of decrease in, decrease in egg land and a little increase in commercial, seasonal. This isn't across the board, but in general. And so, but with this tax levy, this tax rate, we still do, we'll be reducing the county's portion of taxes on nearly every property in the county. So this is, this is your, your last meeting of the year, which means you need to approve our budget so that it can be certified to the state. And the resolution is included in your packet, which, which puts in, it's approved, the budget that is before you today.
Thank you. Any questions, comments, observations by board members? And if there aren't any, a resolution to approve, well.
Yes, I'll, I'll make some comments. I did call Mike this week and talk to him about my suggestions. I, I don't think this is the time that we should be raising taxes at all. Again, there's a significant portion of the private sector that just, again, has been kicked in the teeth and, and, and I just, you know, we're shielded as, as being government employees. Where government employees are pretty much shielded from what's, what's happened. I don't believe Stearns County has laid anybody off. I'm not talking about not replacing people that voluntarily left for whatever reason. But, you know, it's just not true in the private sector. And, you know, so I, I think we should be able to find a way to go with 0%. And I, and I did give Mike a list of where I thought things should come from. And that's it. That's my comment.
Okay, any other comments or observations? I'll make, okay, go ahead, somebody.
Yeah, Steve. You know, I, I was in that camp too, you know, if we can get it to zero, great, because obviously locally, there's a lot, you know, a lot of the towns and cities and townships, you know, you can see they've had some huge increases. But in the same breath, I, I guess I feel the county administration has really took it to heart and tried to really, you know, bring it down from where it could have been. I mean, you can play the game, the market valuation went up, so technically it's a negative. But I, I guess, you know, when you look at most of the area around us, I think the county did a really good job of trying to keep, you know, what our levy as low as possible. And I'd rather see small increases than be bouncing up 5% one year, down to one the next year at up 10%. I mean, I, I'm more of a even keel. Cause there's fixed costs that you can't avoid that change every year, so.
One other thing, there's, there's a editorial in the paper that we get, the Cold Spring Record, and talks about the increase in the lines at the food shelves at River of Life Church, if you happen to know that. That was, lines are all the way out to Highway 23. And then also the food shelf in Cold Spring itself has a big increase. That's it.
Okay, anybody else on this? Just the observation again that, you know, once in a while we have to take a look as, from a management perspective, the reality. Layoffs are ironically expensive because subsequent to a layoff, you incur other types of expenses. And some of these expenses are on down the line. What happens to a, an entity, whether it's public or private, nonprofit or whatever, when they develop a record of layoffs, the, the charges to the unemployment fund down the line go up. So you eliminate a position that isn't an automatic savings on payroll of that position. It isn't 100% savings. It's somewhat proportional and the layoffs have gotten to be blinking expensive. So that's why you see, say, a firm like Electrolux announce these situations where there's, they do this if they can over a mo, a mo, a number of years. And the part of that is somewhat of a lobby effort to the folks that are responsible for the unemployment system that, hey, here's what we're doing, here's how we're going to do it, you know, show mercy. So that's what we got. The good news is, is as indicated earlier, and the point I made with Joe, is there are things that we can do. But it's driven by the timeline that we have to react to do stuff. So if that's the case or not, let's see, do we have a motion in a second on the floor? For this levy?
I'll go ahead and make the motion and I too really appreciate the work staff has done. And including the work that we're doing with regard to prevention that is saving us dollars and helping us pay for other services with our unfunded mandates. So very much appreciate that. And we obviously need to keep working to make sure our businesses are going to get that money out. So thanks, Mike, for what's going to happen next on administering the, the funds to those small businesses and nonprofits.
Thank you, Terrell. Is there a second?
I'll, I'll second that. And too, I want to say, I appreciate the work by staff. And by all means, Jeff, if there's any fat in the budget, I would like to cut that out as well. But I, I, I see it to be a fairly lean budget. I don't see the fat. And for those people that are in the food lines, on the food shelf, the county provides them with quite a few services that actually are helping those folks that would be in pretty rough shape if, if, if we didn't be doing what we're doing. And that includes public safety and also some of the programs that they're receiving things, so.
This has been a pretty sensible discussion. I'm wondering what's come over us. The, we have a motion in a second to adopt the proposed levy. All those in fa, favors say aye. If they're opposed, then we'll do a roll call. Okay, levy, okay, District One?
Aye.
District Two?
Aye.
District Three? District Four, aye. District Five?
Aye.
Okay. Let's see, budget and levy. Issues by commissioners?
Well, recognizing we've gone, we've gone a bit over, but great meeting. A couple of things. One is, I know that we didn't really get to talk about it, but it looks like people are really trying to be following the staying safe orders because our numbers have come down a little bit. So I think for many of us who celebrate Christmas, we're hoping that we get to do that in a safe way with perhaps somebody outside of our, our, our home. Maybe that's delusional. But then the other thing quickly is, it looks like we're getting near the end of the process of the Sheriff's Department and the community groups on Stearns County Sheriff's Community Police Agreement. And really appreciate the work that's been going on there. So just want to thank everybody involved in that.
Okay, anybody else have any comments or inputs?
Lee, I've got an issue and actually I've been wanting to put this in for the last few meetings because
last few meetings because, and it seems like the meetings have been so late and I don't want to delay them. But I'm going to just quickly articulate this so that we can get a little bit of Commissioner's input. And, and that's relating to the park dedication fees and the collection of those fees. The, the Park Commission has been dealing with this for the past year and going one way back and forth and what we're doing and what we should be doing with, maybe as a boat, not knowing what direction to sail. And I, I think we can maybe help if we give them some direction here. Maybe you saw the, the memo from Ben that came the past week or so about park dedication fees. And that also relates to another topic. Jeff and I are on the Park Dedication Fee Committee, but we've never met. And so we talk about archaic committees. One thing that has been here too, is that we are collecting these park dedication fees for the township, but we haven't told the park, the townships, we have this money for them. And so they're sitting on funds, probably anywhere from $2,000 to $20,000 that are there at the township. And those can be used for, for parks. Now, my background is, is doing this is in Sartell Development. Real quickly is that as the city expands, you don't want to burden the city on buying parkland because you've got these new developments. So in the development proposals, they put a park dedication fee. So then those new homes coming in offset those costs. Well, here too, in the township, when there's development, we still have those park dedication fees coming in. The amounts do not amount to enough to buy parkland, nor do the, do they, are they parcels of land big enough to create a park? So what I am suggesting is, first of all, we need to make these townships aware that they have these, this, these funds. But they also have a township hall, and they can provide recreational equipment there at the township hall, which could very well be part of their park rather than go out there and do that. And part of our comprehensive plan was, we were lamenting, well, there's no county parks out on the western side. There's very little possibilities for those. Well, here's an opportunity for them to use those park dedication funds. So Mike, I, I don't know if you have it. I had, I'd just taken a couple of pictures, real simply. If Mike can show them. Here's a simple shelter at, at a, at a township hall. And you, you can see it's got bench, it's got picnic table, there's, there's a barbecue. Another one I got, one of just simple playground equipment. And, and those are things that perhaps these townships could then place on their property as, using these funds. And it would give an opportunity for these townships to have places for people to gather, you know, rather than trying to create a separate park. Now, the, the one thing is, is that money has to be used for permanent items. It can't be used for maintenance. So they can't use it for garbage collection. They can't use it for cutting the grass. They can't reshingle the township hall. But by all means, I think we should make it easy for these townships to take these dollars and implement these dollars. And I don't, I guess I don't want to be big brother and, and try to prevent them from using the dollars they have in their coffers. So I'd like to see if we can move this forward and make it more easy for these townships to access these dollars and, and put them to use. I, I talked pretty fast. I threw a lot at you. But again, we've been sitting on this month after month on the Park Commission talking about it. But I don't even know if the Park Commission is the place for the discussion to be taking place in that those dollars are collected in that township, and they should be able to use them on picnic tables, horseshoe pits, playground equipment, or even a simple shelter if they like. Does that make sense?
To this extent, to this extent, Joe, I think that some thought and discussion has merit. If we can do things in conjunction with other facilities or even other government units jointly, for example, I don't mind park equipment. If we can do this where there's a township hall, so we have some savings and things like shared parking. If this would become popular enough that we'd have some security issues, I don't know how you, the Park Commission views this, but if we would do these things on an adjacent structure so that we could have some sort of a, a video monitoring, because you'd need, well, you need some security if you're going to be doing park activities, you need some way for public safety. And I'm not, it's not a bad idea, but it's not as simply, simple as putting down a concrete pad and putting some picnic tables on it. But it has potential without a doubt. If there's a, if there's a source of funds, some prudent ideas to marry those up with is certainly an opportunity. But those are just, you know, stuff that popped into my mind while I was listening to you.
Commissioner Persky, I think that's, the Park Commission is kind of going down the road you're talking about now. I think with the work you're doing now, and, and I don't think it's too much, has to be too much of a different looking ordinance to accomplish, you know, to, I think part of the problem is, is just what you said, is that those dollars, they've sat there and nobody's really known about them. And originally, I think the ordinance was put in place was, and, and that townships haven't used them because, you know, they don't have a park. But if, if, if there's interest in little smaller projects like you're saying, then that, that would be great.
I will share the experience of St. Cloud Township. Yeah, there was such a thing and it died in 1995. But what happened there is they added a park dedication requirement for each plat. And so what happened before St. Cloud Township merged with the city, they had all of these, they had a whole variety of postage stamped sized parks in these subdivisions. And they were really too small to really do anything with. And then they had societal changes. Even back in the 90s, we were, you know, as a society, we were becoming more and more dubious of children playing unsupervised. You know, if you think back when even the youngest of us grew up, gosh, you know, we woke up in the morning in the summertime and you ate breakfast and you went outside. And if you didn't live in a rural setting where you had your chores and assignments at the home, we didn't see you until lunchtime. And then you came home for lunch and then you hit the road again and see you at supper time. God, there wouldn't be a parent out there. I, I don't think that's left that that happens anymore. So societal changes have to be recognized. I don't know how you adjust for that. But yeah, it's, whoever thought spending money on parks could be a complicated issue? But it is. Anything else?
I have a couple items.
Well, just along with that, Mr. Chair, the, the townships, if they like, they can, they can collect the funds and we have no say in the collection of the funds. The point is that if we collect the funds, we get 25% and they're allowed to spend 75% of those funds. And I don't even, I don't know if the townships are even, some of them aware that they can collect it all and have complete autonomy to do what they care with those funds.
Well, many of our townships, there's no plating activity and that's where the money comes from. So if you have, if you don't have a response, that's from townships, that's part of the explanation. It's not a whole deal. Jeff, I thought I heard your voice.
Yes, I have a couple items. First, Historical Society, which you alluded to, you don't know anything that's going on. So I'll give you one item right now that's going on. It's a fairly large board, and we have a few openings. And of all the board members, they're currently from the metro area.
Yeah.
So they're trying to do a search and, and find somebody from the rural area to serve on that board. And I did give them a couple names that they're going to check into. I know those two people that I gave them are pretty busy people, so I don't know if they will accept because they're already on, involved in a lot of, a lot of stuff. So anybody know from out in the rural areas that be qualified and would like to serve on that board, they would, they would appreciate getting to interview them anyway.
How many?
Second thing is.
Okay. I was just going to offer, how many, maybe? Huh? Go ahead, Jeff. I can bring this up.
Any what? Okay. Second, okay, my second item is, is county recently redid their website. And I'm not sure how much money was spent on that, but I bet it was fairly significant. And I was a little disappointed in it, and asking for years, here's the word transparency. I would, wanted to have the, all of the county salaries listed on it. And I guess at some point, I would ask that this at least be put on a board agenda so we can formally find out where people stand on that. Because I, I think that's an important part of what should be part of our strategic plan in transparency. So at least nothing else the private sector can see, you know, where, how poorly people are paid and where, and why the budget should be what it is. That's it.
Okay. Getting back to the, the Historical Society, I, I know there's a number of local groups that's out in the county and even some that have space that do some of that on a, you know, in their immediate community. Jeff, you know how many out there are out there or what communities they're in? My point is, is. Huh? Yeah.
Baneville has their own. Cold Spring has their own. Holding Ford has, I believe, a small contingent. Albany has also, Kimball are fairly active in theirs. Stock Center is really active in theirs. But the Stearns History Museum would like to get a representative from, from one of those local or some local community or rural community to sit on the board. Because as of right now, it's totally metro.
Good.
I don't know how many people it's about.
How about doing a mailing to those folks?
About 15 people, I think.
Yeah. How about the, the Stearns Museum doing a mailing to those folks, talking about this initiative and asking them, do they have any suggestions? I, I can see a situation where, just like Great River Regional Library Board is an affiliation of 32 different branches located across the six county area, I could see a his, a similar organization of historical entities similarly. And ask that, that's a good first step to ask that group number one for suggestions for board members for the Stearns group. But second of all, to start getting those folks thinking along the lines of more cooperative events, more cooperative types of activities. So you, I think you might be on to something that has a fair amount of potential. So I knew of three of those that you named. I didn't know the rest of them. Good job. Okay. So.
And if, if it doesn't work out, what I've, what I've given them right now, if that doesn't work out, then I'll bring that suggestion up to them.
Hmm. Okay. That, that should work though. I, I'm sure in all the, the, most recently, I was, the Friday of Thanksgiving weekend, I went to the Kimball Christmas Parade. And they're in the process of moving their library out of City Hall and into their new library. But they'll have some space available for a variety of uses in their current City Hall. And that, yeah, that would have some potential, but they weren't, in the extended discussions I've had with those folks, they're not aware. I didn't, not once did the Stearns History Museum come up. So that would, that could go someplace. Well, anything else by board members?
Yeah. Lee, just a couple of things quick. You know, Jeff talked about. Okay. Well, yeah, okay. We got till five, right?
Oh, yeah. There's no happy hour, you know, so the urgency just didn't fare.
I've been happy the whole time. It's been one long hour. No, I was just going to say, you know, another outlet too for people would be TRICAP. You know, they have transportation energy assistance programs. So, you know, people want to reach out to them as well. Their number is 888-765-5597. And going back to the History Museum, Melrose also has a museum. At one point, when the St. Mary's Church issue was up, they actually, that was kind of a proposal was selling the church to that group or the local group and then moving the History Museum there or the Melrose Museum, and then maybe having it like an arts and, kind of like Holding Ford did with that new building. But of course, that didn't happen. But anyhow, enough, half, happy hour is burning up.
Yeah. It used to be fun at happy hour. God, I'm not the capacity to matter anymore.
Merry Christmas.
No kidding. Yeah. Merry Christmas to all of you. Anybody else got?
Merry Christmas.
Some wrap up here? Items by commissioners? It's the same old stuff, you know? I'll be on my way home and I'll think, god damn it, why did I bring that up? But hey, this is remarkable. I didn't think that we'd be done by 1:30, but you did it, folks. Unless somebody else has some input. But yeah, it's been a remarkable year, you know? I mean, sitting here last January, there's no way we could have anticipated this adventure, but we got through it. I think some of the, we're, we're just not well served by the medical data and the reporting on the COVID stuff. The, I'm, I'm just thinking of one case, and I'm sure this happens much, much after, and I appreciate. I'm thinking of the passing of Dennis Ritter, which we talked about in the past. And he was listed as a COVID death. He actually recovered from his COVID and he died of a respiratory issue caused, that's not unusual with career farmers. So I'm thinking that COVID is, you know, for the passing of the high risk group, I'm thinking that for medical professionals, for all the things they've got going on, the individual has passed away, it does no harm to, instead of offering a detailed cause of death, lift COVID and move the heck on. So I don't know. I think it'll be years down the line before we have accurate data on this. And a little too late for action, but realize that we may not be getting information necessarily. But it's definitely the.
Maybe it'll be time to have George Morris come back so we can ask him some of those things.
Yeah.
Going to move for another bathroom break unless we're close to ready to adjourn.
Hey, motion. Is it all right if we adjourn?
Merry Christmas, everybody.
Merry Christmas. It's Hanukkah, so happy Hanukkah to you.
Thank you. And we'll be, we'll be meeting, okay, they're going to try to line up the legislators for next Tuesday. All right. See you, folks. Meeting's over. All right, see ya, folks, meeting's over.